So, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spada, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the October 15th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom and by the Needham channel, and it's being recorded for publication later viewing at administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. I'll call the roll for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert?
Present.
Adam Block?
Present.
Justin McCollin?
Present.
And then Artie Crocker is online today?
Yeah, I'm present online. Thank you.
Okay, and then our staff, Lee Newman and Alex Clear here with us. So our agenda tonight, we have two public hearings tonight. The continuation of major project site plan special permit number 2024-01, Needham Housing Authority for the property located at Linden Street and Five Chambers Street. The continuation of the subdivision at 40 Highland Avenue and 14 to 16 Riverside Street. And then there's a decision to amend to major project site plan for Center of the Heights regarding the installation of a permanent emergency generator. The next one is a motion to amend Article 8 of the October 2024 Special Town Meeting by Town Meeting Member Glenn Mulno. An A and R plan for the property located at 103 Lawton Road and 133 South Street. We have to review, I think, four items for a Board of Appeals, a general bylaw review committee appointment, meeting minutes, a report from the Planning Board and Board members, and correspondence. So with that, we have the continuation of the hearing for the Needham Housing Authority property. And so, would you like to come up? And is there anyone that we need to bring in?
I don't think so.
To continue it, right? We just continue it? Okay.
Share the mics out here.
There we go. All right.
I think we have it now.
And we received your letter, I'll say it later as a correspondence, but we received your letter from October 8th citing the different pieces, including Building Commissioner, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, Design Review Board, Division of Public Health, and miscellaneous public comments that were addressed. So if you can present the changes that were made?
Can you turn it over to Bob?
Okay, Bob Smart for the Needham Housing Authority. I was going to say Needham Planning Board, but you know, that was a long time ago. Anyway, so at the last meeting, obviously, there were a number of concerns raised by residents. The board had some questions, and you also had some correspondence from the various departments and issues that they wanted to address. Since that time, the team, led by Reg and Dan, have really, they've met with all of the different, all the different boards, and you have correspondence back, I think, from most of those, most of the boards and departments. And I believe that we've resolved all of the issues to the various other departments' satisfaction. But I think we ought to have Dan run through the details. So, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Dan Chen, BH Plaza Architects. I'm going to share my screen here. So this is continuation of the Planning Board from September 24th. Since that time...
Yeah, we might need your mic.
Sorry. Just for the people online. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Since that time up to today, we met with the Fire Department, Building Commissioners, Public Works, Police Department, again, because we've met them before, and this is to address the issues that were raised and which I'll go through them. And then we concurrently are going through Conservation Commission as part of the site plan review. And so, and we have revised some of those materials when we submitted to them. So for tonight, the second Planning Board public meeting, and then subsequently, we will have a con-con public hearing later this week as well, or sorry, next week. I want to quickly summarize what was, what we heard at the last meeting. So, agreed to provide sound study for the emergency generator, which we'll have. We increased the stormwater management system capacity beyond what is needed. We provided operation and maintenance plan for stormwater system. We will provide public outreach by incorporating a rain garden in Phase 1B, which, again, you'll see all of these in the subsequent slides. We were looking at a wider path at the back, what we call the back, which is the wetland side of the site. In our conversation with the Fire Department, there were some modifications to further, and to further reinforce the firefighting ability of the firefighter, which you'll also see tonight. And as the board chair or the chair raised that the south elevation, which is the demising wall between Phase 1A and 1B, should Phase 1B not start immediately, what do you do with that wall? So we're providing a design to show the board that, what we're doing. And lastly, pre-construction meeting was the various departments, Public Health, or sorry, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Chief, Building Commissioners, and these were discussed with them in, with the various departments. And that's, this is all after the 9/24 meeting that occurred here. I'll touch on the stormwater management. Initially, what we submitted to the, as a site plan review, had a 54% decrease from the site runoff to the neighborhood. By increasing the capacity, we now have the ability to reduce water flow to 78% instead of the 54. And I'll show you the plan, that you'll see the degree. And, and the reason why we made this point, or we made this decision, or rather, at this capacity, is that this is actually the threshold for which, if you continue to increase the capacity, you have diminution returns, and you'll see that on the site plan. And the DPW, Comprehensive Stormwater Study, we've talked with DPW, Needham DPW, and then also will be assisting and working with them to sort of further understand and, or as they identify in their studies, what we can do to help. So, these were the summary of our meeting with them after the September 24 meeting. I'm sorry. The, this is what was submitted in the August 23rd site plan review initially. Highlighted where the storm is the door is, of what was proposed initially. And I'll stress that what was proposed initially, and the bylaw requirements by 78%. Fire access drive, we made some revisions for me in person. This is actually the fire truck that the Fire Department is purchasing or in the process of purchasing, so...
We all voted for it in the spring of 2023, $2 million, and it's arriving. It's our new teller truck.
And, and aside from the pretty image, what we wanted to stress is the reach of the 100 feet. And so, because of the specifications and working with the Fire Department and the Building Commissioner, we've extended the current design such that what you see here in orange is, is in addition to what was submitted to the site plan review, we were, we were making these, these extensions, and these are impervious, or rather, pervious asphalt surfaces into, into the back of the building. And this is all in, in the, in the, in the context of trying to extend with the new truck, the reach to the back of the building. The original hose pull distances, as well as the fire hydrant location, remains the same. So you continue to have that level of fire access. And finally, because the building is fully sprinkled, we think that this is, as per Fire Chief as well, that this is very, very satisfactory to them. Landscape and building revisions, we heard what the Design Review Board and also as part of planning raised about better connections with the site. This was what was submitted in, on August in the original site plan, and then this is what we currently are, have revised and have resubmitted as a revision, revision one. And in that, what you see here is the, the enlarged path in the back of the building. Also, what you see in dark is a, now we have connected between and crossed the fire lane and sort of through the back, through the front, and then continuing on to chamber side. And as you know, the rest of the site is, is fairly green, and so this would then continue as we go through the chamber building. So, and then this, lastly, the building plans. Again, it was raised in the last Planning Board meeting, what do you do when you don't have Phase 1B yet, and so do you have a big blank wall? What we have developed here is a continuation of that architectural language on south elevation in Phase 1B. So what you're seeing in the gray is the staircase, and then we'll have the, the sort of window openings where the hallways are, and then these, these windows on that side. And so then the question is, what happens when Phase 1B comes in? That facade will be taken out, and then you would effectively extend the side of the building. Yes?
Yes.
There's no units where those windows are, right?
They are units. There are units on these double windows are units, so now effectively they've gained two additional, or two additional windows in that unit.
But only entail, only entail an if.
That, that's correct.
And then they're going to lose those windows.
They would lose those two additional windows that would continue to have what they have on the south side, which is two windows, one for living room and one for the bedroom.
Would you be able to reuse those windows in the second addition?
We may be able to. And again, as, you know, as construction, sometimes it's easier to start anew, but the dimensions are the same, so it is possible that these can be reused.
Okay, just, and that would be, something that would be explained to those residents that are in, those that, you know, this is, potentially those windows could be done.
This is a contingency, really. We further, Betsy Collins here of Peabody Properties is with us tonight. You know, since we last met, we've been evolving the approach to getting the financing. So our expectation is we'll be putting in for the financing for Phase 1A next month with the preliminary application we've talked about, go through that annual cycle. And then should we, you know, optimally be, be, money's awarded for that, then we'll put the Phase 1B financing package in one year from today, and, and it will be through the cycle, you know, should it make it through, and, and we'll be also representing that this is really all part of one project. And so if they do fund this for Phase 1A, they're, you know, they're not 100% committed in writing, but that obviously Phase 1B is coming along. So hopefully, we will not have to use this contingency.
So in closing, I also wanted to respond, and these are, these, some of these are documented in the Building Commissioner, Fire Department responses to the Planning Board. The structural integrity of the proposed building, we do have a geotechnical exploration report, and, and these are per industry standards. I, we believe that this building, with this, we understand the soil conditions and that there, there is sufficient bearing for the amount of foundation load or the load that the structural engineer are looking for. Fresh air circulation was raised. This air in each zoning unit is around, will exchange around one time per hour, and that translates to 75 CFMs for, in the, in the restrooms or in the bathrooms, 50 CFM in the kitchens and so on, so these all are to code, not exceeding requirements. Window opening control devices, this is per building code, and so we're citing the building code that is, makes this requirement. That's in, in Section 10, 1015A, you know, windows require, and there's four conditions, you can choose any one of those conditions, aside from putting, one of the condition obviously is limiting your windows to opening four inches. Other options are less attractive, such as putting bars across your windows. So, and then lastly, life safety, we, we were looking at, discussing this with the Building Commissioner, pointing out that there are three exist stairs. These are two-hour radius stairs, there are fire and smoke rated doors and enclosures. And so, and he's, and as, as I had stated in the last Planning Board meeting, that he's completing agreement with the shelter in place concept, and also in terms of the egress occupant load, once they exit the door, you have two means to get to, two means out, so. And then exposure to dust and hazmat was, was brought up. We have stringent rules that, as you know, we need to follow as part of the construction. And so, and we do have ACM report as well, so we're aware of what, what is the existing conditions are. The renovation instead of redevelopment, and I think this option was considered as our initial design study, and ultimately was really too expensive, as well as the, the original buildings are not really suited for this redevelopment scenario. Alternative sites for development, that was also looked at as part of the study. In fact, NHA has done that much earlier, and I think the conclusion was that it's really here for, for this site. I am sure Reg can go into details if there's more questions. Communication with the residents, I think outreach has occurred frequently, and, and I think, again, ten of meetings were held, and, and this is all prior to the Planning Board upon September 24th. The traffic impact study during construction, and again, this as we discussed this with the Police Department subsequent to this September 24th meeting, Planning Board meeting, and that the agreement, or rather, is that the construction management plan will be submitted. And again, this is, we, it was going to be submitted, so we just reinforced that point with the police, the Police Chief. And also discussing about a pre-construction meeting that involves all the, all the parties and the stakeholders involved, so that, I think the message from the department, the Police Department, is that things need to be very clear and also clearly communicated, and, and I think that's, that we will do. Impact of the post-development traffic studies, as you can see in the traffic report that's included, I think there's, there's sort of minimal impact to the post-development scenario also by, as, as you know, in the traffic report, we have included build and no build scenarios, and in the build, build-out scenario, as in if the other parts of the develop, or the other parts of the site are developed, as in the surrounding contact, I think you will see that there are still minimal impact in terms of this development. So with that, I'd like to hand over back to, to, to the board.
I just, I just have a couple, a couple of other, of other points kind of on legal issues. One was that, you know, I did some research, I had some communications with Town Council Chris Heap. It's, it's pretty clear that, you know, the relief that you could grant is limited to two years. However, he agreed with me, and there's some case law to support it, it is possible for the board to make a finding in the, in the decision to the effect that the board, the board understands that financing may not come through, we may not be in a position in two, within, within that two-year timeframe to, to get, get a demolition permit and a building permit and actually start construction. And so, you, you can add some language to the, to, to, to a decision indicating that, that, you know, that you, that you, you know, intend to allow renewals as, as needed, you know, provided that, that we provide to you some documentation to indicate why we're not there yet. And I, in the, in the letter I submitted to the board this morning, I, I actually came up with some, some language that you might at least consider. The other thing was that I, Heap sent an email to Reg and I, because we've been nagging him a little bit about, you know, the Attorney General reviewing the zoning articles, and he, he sent an email back saying that he expects that we're going to have something back from the Attorney General by October 23rd. Now, I'm hoping it's not going to be, we need more time, you know, which I guess we could here, but we'll, we'll certainly keep the board abreast of what's going on there. And I would think you'd hear any word.
Actually, if I may, I just like to point out, I misspoke on one element, which was this wall here, that is the demising wall, is there's no units. So you don't have a unit here since it's the elevator lobby area, so my apologies.
And it looked like there were two sides, I mean, there were two pieces. There was an opaque one and one with windows, but this looks like it has three pieces. So...
So I'll, I'll go back to the elevation here. So it's, it's...
This is the stair梯. This is the hallway. And then this is the elevator. There's no, there's, there's sort of in the sink. And so, that's why we sort of created these windows to make it look like a residential room.
Yeah.
I just wanted to provide one clarification to the board on the, on the presentation, and yes, this has gone back to all the departments, and they've looked at it. There was what, the issue though with the fire, with this new fire truck and the redesign that it's requiring in the back of the building, is something that the, they've submitted some revised drawings, I think they came in today, that reflect that, that they still do need to go back to the Fire Department for a final sign-off and Engineering for a final sign-off.
And those are the ones?
And, and Conservation. So we'll, we'll have the whole hearing open, at least on our end, until the 29th of October to allow the comments from the Fire Department and Engineering Department to come in.
But they're the ones that are reflected today that we saw today?
Yes.
Okay. So, questions?
So, a couple of things. One, with respect to the decision, Bob, would we potentially, and this may actually be, have one of the conditions in our decision, if we don't hear back from the AG by the, before our next hearing, that, you know, one of the conditions is subject to the Attorney General's assent of the zoning?
Well, we'll acknowledge it in some form in the decision.
My second question, when you are noting this as a finding with respect to the length of the financing, which may exceed the, the active period of the, of the decision, is you're not requesting at this time that we go to a three-year period? You're suggesting that, you're suggesting that at the, you're claiming, you want to include it as a finding, so that way you can subsequently request and having, and attached to that finding from this decision for that?
What I'm trying, what I'm trying to establish here is a mechanism for an extension, and I'm hoping that that can be done without the requirement of, of, of a new, or a new, a new public hearing, just on the question of an, of an extension. It seems to me that that's something that appropriately could, could be...
We generally vote them after that.
Excuse me?
We generally vote them without a hearing, and we just did it on the MUDSIE site.
You said, you said without?
Without a hearing.
Right.
On MUDSIE, we just basically, we basically voted to. They came in, they asked for an extension, the board voted and granted it.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, so you may have the language that...
Well, our existing language actually enabled the board to do that, so...
I'll have to take a look at that.
Okay.
Well, it's a little different, actually, because what we're asking for is that, unless, I think what you're asking for is that you give us notice certain number of months, three months, three months prior to the expiration, and then if we don't get, if we don't get any objection from somebody in the community, then we don't even have to have a hearing. It's automatic. Whereas with MUDSIE, we still had to have, I shouldn't say a hearing, we had a meeting. We had a meeting.
They voted it.
Right, so you're asking us to do it without, without the necessity of a meeting, unless somebody, somebody comes in and... I, I don't feel strongly about that. As, I, as long as it can be done without, you know, notice and public hearing and so forth. Either, either completely administratively or at a, at a board meeting would be fine. Yeah, that's what we did with, that's what we did with MUDSIE. So, may I? Just on this issue, one, I don't recall seeing anything from Chris Heap. Have you gotten correspondence from Chris Heap that says that he agrees with Bob's analysis and that he is okay with Bob's language?
I haven't got anything on Bob's language. I did, Chris and I had a conversation on the two-year limit and whether or not we were stuck with two years, and that was basically where we came back, that we're stuck with two years. But I have not had any conversations with Chris on his proposed language.
Okay. On my proposed language, but Chris did send, did send Lee an email. And I, I think you have that, you may have had that in your package, I, I mean, I have a copy of it right here. Okay.
And he basically said, he commented on the two years.
Okay. Yeah, he, so I'm clear that we can only grant two years initially? And is, you're asking for two two-year extensions? Yes.
I was not asking for those extensions today.
But...
For the opportunity.
Let me finish my question. What do our bylaws provide for how many extensions we can grant? Because I'm kind of used to seeing that we can grant one extension, but I'm not clear that our, that our bylaws allow us to grant a second extension.
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to defer to Town Council on that, because I think I've only done, I can only remember doing it once.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking you to confer with Chris Heap and make sure that we can in fact grant what Bob is asking for, which is two extensions. When I looked at the, when I looked at the bylaw and at 48, Section 9, and Planning Board rules, I didn't see any restriction on number of extensions. So we could grant two-year extensions, add infinitum on any project? As necessary, as necessary. We, we, we have to show good cause.
They have to show good cause.
They have to show, we have to, we have to find good cause.
Yeah, and you know, the zoning didn't change or...
Right, yeah. Right. So my only comment to Bob's language, if I may, assuming that we incorporate Bob's language is, and this is kind of a nit change, you'll pardon me, Bob, for requesting a nit change. I was just throwing it out there. But it's, Bob had provided that NHA provides written requests for renewal at least three months from the two-year anniversary. I'd like to change from to prior to. So it would be at least three months prior to the two-year anniversary. Just use the word from could be either side. You're right. And it appears in two places.
Any other questions?
No, that's it. I'm done.
I thank you for getting back and getting some of the, the departments to answer some of the questions that I had before. I feel confident, and I will, I will look forward to the, on the fire and Tom Ryder's...
Tom Ryder's letter came in today, I think.
Yes, he, he, on the base, on the plan, on the first, on the set, he submitted last week.
Yeah, so you haven't seen it.
Yes, he hasn't seen, he hasn't seen the revised drawings that came in yesterday or today.
On, on the timing, I'd like to request that the board authorize indirectly to begin drafting a decision, so that you have something in front of you on 29th, because I'm assuming that between now...
No, no, Bob, we, we had a conversation with Reg here, and we have agreed, we have agreed on a framework, because when his deadlines are, that we'll continue the hearing to the 29th, and we'll have a hearing, the decision at the, at the meeting immediately after that.
I forgot to tell you that. Are, are we okay with it?
Yes, we are. So, so, so actually, yeah, Bob was out, you're right, I goofed here, so. So, but what I did, what I did, it's only one goof. That's pretty good for a volunteer, right? So wait, let, let me just make my point here before. So one of the things we did was we asked our partner over here to do some quiet calling around as to when the actual application deadline is for this pre-application. And found that it was unlikely to be, that it's going to be around the 20th or 21st of November, where we've been operating up to now was like the first of November, which could conceivably be. We still don't have an official date, but we have some confidence in that. So I, Bob was out. So I called Lee and said, you know, I don't, we don't want to jam everybody if it isn't really needed to be jammed. And I think we have a little bit more time to do things in a more orderly fashion in terms of getting the decision. And sorry.
But I think.
November 6th.
It would be November 6th. It would be the next meeting.
We can still begin, we can still begin to draft the decision.
We're already, we are already doing all this stuff internally, but we have that town meeting on the 21st.
That little town meeting.
That little town meeting, you know, with the MBTA zoning. So we are.
I understand that. I guess I'm just thinking through.
Decision has already begun to be drafted. It will be ready on the day we reach.
And we're okay with that. It's not going to be, be the issue that, you know, we were worried about all summer. So.
Just to, just to pick at this a little bit further, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, Bob, that you don't have a decision until the 6th. That usually the board is usually back and forth, emails back and forth between each of Lee and board members. And that can go on for some time before
For two weeks.
the language gets finalized. So I'm, I'm a little.
And it's not just a function of psych control, but you have to demonstrate, you have to demonstrate that you've received zoning approval. Otherwise.
You want to check that box in that preliminary application.
So that's a critical.
But I feel like they're already working on it. We have the town, town meeting. And so I think we're in good shape and we will set, we'll provide all the emails this week. We will not provide email. We'll, we'll make sure that, I mean, we're not trying to hold it up.
Right. No, they got the zoning approval from the town, just waiting for the general.
No, no, no. They have to be able to demonstrate in their applications, step up from the zoning to the town meeting, that.
And I also appreciate all of the, all the due diligence and all the questions that we had and that the community had. So thank you very much. So do we need to open up?
So we're, we're continuing the hearing?
We have, yeah, maybe we want to take testimony.
Yeah, from the public.
Present to speak tonight. And then yes, we'll continue the hearing until the 29th. And I would suggest that we continue it to seven o'clock and just take everybody again.
We'll hold it open only for receipt of those.
That's what I was recommending.
Okay. So we'll do that when we, when we vote it, but we need to hear from the community. So, okay. So thank you. So as we open up to public comment, I would like to remind attendees of our ground rules for public hearings to ensure an accurate public record and to enable a fair platform to hear from our neighbors. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. And please keep your remarks to three minutes so we can hear from as many people as possible. If you have multiple points to make and need more time, we will genuinely attempt to return to you after others that have not spoken are given a chance to speak. Please address your comments through the chair. Simply saying that you agree with a previous speaker is a great way to have your voice heard while making time available to hear from our other neighbors. And unless a question can be easily answered by a board member, staff and the applicant, we may ask staff to note your question so we can review, consider and subsequently answer it. You can also provide comments and writing by email to planning@needhamma.gov. So with that, I know we have some online, but is there anyone here who would like to come up and speak?
This is the application. I have to do it in three minutes to go over it.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you very much. My name is Ross Donald, 25 Chambers Street. And let's see, where to begin? I guess the question I have is, and I could hear you talking about it. I didn't quite get all the details or what the upshot, upshot of it was. But as I understand it from the notice, the Attorney General has to weigh in on this. Have we heard from the Attorney General?
It relates to the zoning bylaw change that the
Right, exactly. Well.
Had approved. And a part of that procedure is the Attorney General reviews it and within six months provides the asset.
You may remember from the last meeting that we heard from Chris Heep, Town Council, that he had been in touch with the Attorney General's office to find out where they were. And they said that because of the MBTA zoning, which is in the same office as approving this zoning, they have so many, so many applications from the towns on the MBTA zoning that they've had to put everything else aside and be focusing on MBTA zoning. And that's what's causing the delay.
And what they're thinking is that they'll receive it by October 23rd.
That's what, that's the last thing that, that they told Chris Heep.
Right.
Yeah. And I also recall, if I'm remembering this correctly, that there was a statement along the lines of that there was no problem with the application. Well, how can they not review it and say there's no problem? If they review it, then they might be able to say there's a problem or not. We don't know whether there's a problem.
A lot of times what you do is you get lawyers who give a quick look at something and say, it looks okay so far. We're putting it aside. We'll give it a more detailed look.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you want to spend the time on, you know, it's up to you on the procedure. I know you've got limited time.
Well, I am interested in the process because that's all we have. We're, we're residents here and we want to eventually claim a role here, you know? We have a role to play here. And if we're not included in, in notices about hearings and so forth, then we're just left out. Well, we have to find a way to gain access to the information. So I am interested in these processes. Another one is from the Conservation Commission. Even though before their, the, the initiation of their hearing, they said that, that is Deb Anderson said in, in an email here in response to Alex's reminders that things are happening. We anticipate the commission will vote to issue the permit for this phase. Well, there's been some additional information and they didn't do that. They extended their hearing. And there was one thing as, and they also referred to mass DEP. In, they apparently have a, a reviewing role or they review the filing and they at least, at least issue a filing number. So it becomes an account for them. Very interested in these sorts of things. For instance, I just discovered that the DPW does an annual survey. And I don't know what it's confined to, whether it's of the housing authority every year. You know, that's the kind of thing that I, I, I would chase down. So, but all the, all this adds up to, there are things that are provided through these agencies and processes. But they're also providing changes. That is, the application has been modified. So I'd certainly like to hear what the modifications are so I can have an opinion that's grounded. So, and so that's just a couple of examples. There are other examples, the fire department, the letter in response from the, from Tom Conroy was no issues with fire department. Well, turns out there are issues. So, and I think keeping the door open, that is extending these hearings so that the residents or whoever might have an opinion on it. And it turns out that he's, he's being called to, I understand he might be coming in or a representative from the fire department to answer some of these questions. So, no. Well, I don't have an answer and I don't see whether, where he's provided an answer. And other residents have questions as they've presented them in the past and they're going to continue to do that, I guess. There are other.
Excuse me, Ross, just to let you know, it's still in the package. It shows where the fire department is and that sheet that is resubmitted with the changes are included in it. So. This is a really good memo, just to see all the work that's been done by them. And then, but it's in the packet. So I think I would, I would go through it. And then if you have any questions, you can, you know, email because there is, there is information that's.
It's a letter from Reg Foster dated October 8th.
Okay. Yeah. So this gives every department and where it stands.
Although, although also it's available online and all, and all of the changes that have been, that have been made to the plans have been in, included in the packet and every successive meeting.
Yeah.
And, and typically the applicant here, Reg, but also more often their, their attorney and here represented by attorney Smart summarizes, you know, some of the changes or the architect will summarize some of the changes in some kind of a narrative form. All of that is in the, you know, is accessible online in our packets.
Let me make it there for everybody. Cause this is how I get to the packet, even though we get an email that has a link. Sometimes I go online myself. So I put into Google Needham Planning Board Packet.
It's done by week. So you'll see.
Yeah. So that, that, that then gives me a link to agenda and packet. You want to click on packet. And under packet, there are two places that you can go. One is the current packet, which will give you tonight's packet. Then it has all other packets if you want to look at a prior packet.
But it's accessible to everyone before the meeting. Usually you put it up on Thursday and then.
Right. The Thursday before our meeting is when it's first online. And then as things come in, because some things do come in after Thursday, Alex adds it to the packet. So if you were to go there like at two o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday before our meeting, you'll get an up-to-date packet all online. Just to warn you though.
Always emailing. That's easier.
Tonight's, tonight's packet, tonight's packet is 396 pages. So there's a lot of scrolling.
The entire agenda, but that includes the entire agenda. But it has all the stormwater. There were like 100 pages on stormwater information. So I highly recommend that you review it. And if you have questions, then send, send an email.
But it has revised plans. And it has Reg's letter.
Yeah.
It has Bob Smack's letter.
Like this presentation by the design team here, I'm sure it was very interesting. I wasn't following it. It was a little too far to, to see it. And so, and I couldn't hear anything either. So I have to go online to catch it. And fortunately, the, the bigger committees do this very quickly. Staff is really super, you know, doing all these things. And also very informative. They always, whenever I talk with any of the staff people, they give me more information
Yep.
than I needed, than I asked for, you know? And I wouldn't have known to ask for some of the things that they're giving me. So it's very helpful.
So Ross, I'm going to get seven minutes. So I have to give someone else a chance.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, let's do that.
Appreciate the fact that you brought all of the information, but please take a look at it. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm going to come back and talk more. That's all right.
Well, let's go through and see who else is, is, well, is there anyone, one second. Is there anyone online? It doesn't seem like there's anyone online. Yes. So please, yes, come forward. Please state your name and address.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Marlene Costa and I live at Chambers Street, 40 Chambers Street in Needham. I have, even though I have not had the opportunity to review this board packet, I didn't know it was going to be available before this meeting. However, I did listen very closely to the presentation that was made by the, by the architect for the project concerning some of these issues and the diagrams that he put forth. So as far as the issue with the fire lane and the fire safety issues, the diagrams that he showed really did not differ greatly from the original plan that I could see. It still shows a fire lane that stops abruptly and doesn't even turn the corner of the building, the back of the building. There is a regulation of a minimum, because I did some research concerning this, of a minimum of 18 feet wide fire lanes in, you know, this type of a residential building, although it may be higher depending on the number of units. I don't see any fire lane whatsoever in the, anywhere near the back of the building. It doesn't even seem to cover the sides of the building from the, from the drawings that were shown here this evening. So I did take a look at some of the other large residential complexes around Needham that were built many, you know, several years ago. Wingate, for example, North Hill on the Hoyden Glen. They all have several fire lanes, complete fire lanes. Nothing's abbreviated. Nothing is, you know, substandard in any way or abbreviated. So it worries me a great deal that the, the people who are actually going to live in these buildings, that their safety and their health and quality of life is being sacrificed. A one of, not only from the fire lane, but also some other concerns, but definitely the fire safety issue is important. They talk about sheltering in place, basically staying in your apartment to die of smoke inhalation. And people have raised this question in several meetings. Oh, and we're told, well, there's a sprinkler there. Everything's fine. There's a sprinkler there and you're not supposed to leave the building. Well, the sprinkler system may save part of the building, but people don't die of flames. They die of smoke inhalation during a fire. And those sprinkler systems and sheltering in place, especially with windows that don't open more than four inches is, is such a safety hazard for smoke inhalation. And I just think that everybody in the town of Needham should know that. And I hope that they're listening to some of these meetings that are online. Because it's, I feel that it's outrageous to expect people to stay in an apartment. They couldn't even open the window to get out. Even if the fire truck was there to save people, how are they going to get in the building? Smash the windows open? And the, okay.
Yeah. I want to make sure we're over three minutes. I want to make sure you get to other points.
The air ex, okay. But I just hope you take it seriously or that, well, I understand there's a lot of money involved. So that seems to be taking precedence. The air exchange. Now, the last meeting we had, the architect, I believe, mentioned that we're going to do an air exchange of two times per hour. He said that verbally at the last meeting. There is a minimal standard. I don't, I can't quote the law right now, but I'm going to invest, I can assure you, I'm going to find all of the appropriate documentation and laws concerning this. But in buildings that are congregate housing, the air exchange, it's a minimum of three times per hour that is considered healthy and safe, especially after COVID. Because a lot of the regulations have changed since COVID. And they have found that people in congregate housing, they had air exchanges that were less than three times per hour. And that's why they developed COVID and there were so many deaths. Now, tonight I hear that the air exchange, according to the documentation that was presented here, is only going to be one time per hour. Which is completely, it's, it's not safe. Our safety and our health is being compromised by that. And I just.
So Ms. Costa, just in general, a lot of these items are building department items that I think you should talk to the building inspector about?
Once the building, once the, once this is all approved, and it seems like you're going on having a lot of faith in advance. And, you know, just hoping that all the approvals come through and flying by the seat of your pants, so to speak, because that's what it looks, it sounds like to anyone listening to this. Okay? With an impartial mind. That's not acceptable. The building department isn't going to get involved until everything else is approved. And they're not going to change the rate of air. They're not going to, because there's a money issue, because there's a money issue. Two other quick points before I run out of time. But there's money issues involved. They have a set 80 million from HUD or wherever their financing is coming from. And if they only have the money for the one-time air exchange, they're not going to go up to three if everything is already approved and we wait for the building department. And as far as two points on the presentation by the architect, the fall protection, claiming there's a fall protection, that's the reason why the windows can't be open? That's not correct. The fall protection by law is for buildings with tenants under the age of 11. No one is going to be a tenant under the age of 11 in these buildings now or in the future. future. There are people that have reasonable accommodations and they can call to have those locks removed, to have real windows. And the two, and as far as not having any money available for renovations, that it's impossible to renovate the building, that is also not true. There is an, over a $2 billion package that was just approved by the governor for capital improvements and other necessary renovations for public housing, over $2 billion. And each town and city needs to, you know, fight for those funds, to apply for them. The bottom line is Needham doesn't want to do that because they have this project, which is far more profitable in some way, or whatever the other rationale may be. Our share of 2 billion, I'm sure, is enough to provide for a great deal of renovations, for the heating systems, the pipes. And just in closing, I just want to say with DPW, I'm glad that they've spoken up and brought their attention to all the issues about stormwater management and the watershed challenge and the catch basin. There's nothing that's been said about who maintenance is it, who drains it, how large is it? What about the structural integrity of the building after it's completed with all of this water surging everywhere and being held on the property? You know, I mean, as far as settling, sometimes it can take five years before a building starts to sink and collapse. If it's, you know, with a structural engineer then comes in and says, well, yeah, it's not sound. You're going to do the feasibility studies before, you have to get the structural engineer before to do, before the project begins, before everything's approved. In my, that's what I feel is good business and it makes good business sense.
Well, thank you, Ms. Costa.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate all you're saying. I, I do think that you should talk to the building department because some of it is not in our purview. So that's why I brought it up, not because I don't want to deal with it.
No, thank you. I appreciate you explaining that.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone online? Can you bring Helen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Helen Giragosian. I live at Chambers Street in Needham. I just wanted to say that I'm having a hard time hearing everyone tonight because I think when you guys are speaking, you've been too, some of yous, not all yous, been a little bit too far away from the microphone perhaps, or it could just be the connection. But I wasn't, I hear some of yous really loud and clear. I hear you, ma'am, but I don't, don't hear everyone else. Maybe the other gal was, forgive me, I can't remember her name, in the black shirt, I can hear her fine. I would like to thank you guys. Can you hear me now?
Well, thank you, Helen. Do you have a comment or a question?
Yes, I'm still in favor, I'm still in favor of this thing. And I wish that people would be more prepared before they come in that Packet was available online. And a lot of these things were gone over in the last meeting. Sometimes it's tedious to hear the same thing over and over when they made their point last meeting, I recall, especially with the air exchange. He said he wasn't sure it was one to two hours and that he would find out. Today, they said one. That point is taken as, as to whether or not it is truly, if it's different than, let's say, a hospital building, I'm sure the hospitals have more rapid air exchange because of COVID, probably they changed that. But I'm not sure that they require that for regular residential buildings. That's something I'd love to hear the answer on myself as far as that air exchange goes. But other than that, I just haven't seen any data yet with fires in these new buildings that they're doing with the sprinklers and the four-inch windows. I don't, haven't seen anything, thank God, tragic that the system fails. If there's anything that anyone can produce otherwise, I'd entertain hearing it, but I haven't seen it. Thank you, everyone, for your time. I won't take any more of it.
Thank you, Helen.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, please come on. Again, we're trying to keep it to three minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jim Burke and I reside at 188 C Linden Street and have since 2007. I've seen a lot come in and a lot go up. One of my concerns tonight was with Dan Chanton's presentation of it would be a 100-foot ladder extension. We still don't have full coverage onto the rear of the building and you have to play the what-if game. What if somebody has a heart attack and has to be rescued by way of the window? My rich research shows, and I echo what Marlene has stated, that the four-inch rule does not apply if there is no occupant under the age of 11. Wish I was age 11, but that time has passed me. The other concerns that I have, I was going into my sophomore year in Newton High School when Hurricane Alice and Hurricane Carol hit. Lived in High Street in Newton, Upper Falls. When you had a tree go down and, and Alice, Carol brought it up. In my, Ms. Smith, my English teacher, we had a topic to write on what unusual, something unusual had happened during the summer. I wrote the composition on what I just described. She gave me an A and put down, I don't believe you. And at that young age, you have to say, it's true, it's true. And it is true here, the way that fire lane has been omitted. I was expecting that the fire chief was going to be here tonight and would explain his rationale. And I look under the statute, the fire chief is head of the fire department to fight fires. But we know that the fire department also makes rescues. One of my favorite TV programs is Emergency, where you see the medics go out and perform. God forbid if anything happened to a future tenant here. The other main concern I have is before we start building the building, we got to demolish the buildings. And when you demolish the buildings, I've been told that there's asbestos at Linden Street. And across the street today, as I'm walking down Linden Street, the schoolchildren are out on recess. And I'm saying, how could they contain asbestos in the building if they're knocking them down? I just hope that all of you take a step back, review all of the material, forget the timelines, forget the deadlines, but do the right thing for the people here on Linden Street in Chambers and let's go on. And don't root low renovation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Burke. Anyone else online? Alex?
Yes, there is. Kaylee, yes.
Is Kaylee able to come in or? Doesn't seem like Kaylee's coming in. Oh, there she is.
Thank you so much. I do apologize about that. My name's Kaylee Moriarty. I live at Chambers Street. I wanted to just make a quick note, reference to Helen. I know that she said that she does not have the data regarding smoke inhalation. I've gone through a house fire and you can find the data from the National Fire Protection Association that most fire dusts are the result of smoke inhalation rather than burns. I just wanted to quickly put that out there because it's, oh, that's very, not great. I, yeah, that's a huge problem. So I just wanted to put some insight into the smoke inhalation. You can find that at the National Fire Protection Association. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. Anyone else there in the public that would like to speak again? Anyone else? You're, you're the last one. I'm sorry, Ross, just because you already went, so I just want to make sure that there's no one else. Okay. And, and please keep it to three minutes because I just want to make sure that we get through.
Ross Donald again. Yeah, thank you very much. I'll just be brief. Again, one of my big concerns, maybe it's because I've worked in libraries and so forth, is information, how it's handled, how it's distributed, transparency and so on. So I, it should, just in passing, the work on Linden Chambers project, which is now the Linden redevelopment project, you know, everything changes a little bit. You all can know where things are going by changing the title. So it's been, project gets smaller and theoretically more manageable. And, and part of the reason why, one of the big changes is that Cambridge Housing Authority has not maintained a prominent role in this. And Needham, yeah, the housing authority had to go out and, and get a partner developer. Okay? So from June, there's been no written reports in the board packages to the housing authority. There has been verbal sort of status reports until this memorandum of October. So for all that time, it really has been kind of a headless horseman, you know? The reports haven't been provided in writing to the, to the board. We haven't received anything, the residents, except by sort of meetings where we, you know, there, there's been no mission statement, there's no vision, there's no direction. It's, it's a headless horseman. A lot of people are, highly paid expert consultants are doing a lot of work and I don't see it pulling together, particularly around issues like a proper post-pandemic response. In 1918, there were significant architectural changes, changes in appliances. Porcelain came in because people discovered that how a pandemic like that spread. And we've learned a few more things, particularly around air, air management and so forth. And I think we can do a lot better thinking about it. So, and I just, this is all, all, all goes to the point of continuing the hearing so that we can gather this information together, so it'll be applicable for, we expect to be having two years, what, of further discussion before any, any construction. This is a great opportunity and I think the Needham Housing Authority could provide a significant role in this, just the landscaping alone. We already have our Linden Street Botanical Garden collection. Now, we've got new consultants that want, don't even care about that, are not interested. Well, there's a history that goes back 50 years, 75 years on the landscaping that was selected for the veterans' housing. So we'd like to continue that for, just for our historical record and it's of interest, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can't, I can't top what, what Jim said, so thank you very much. We're very lucky to have such articulate and informed people here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to something that Helen Gregorian brought up.
Yeah, you have to come up and you have to state your name so that everyone can hear you.
Yes, my name is Marlene Costa. I live at 40 Chambers Street in Needham. I just wanted to respond to the statement that was made by Ms. Gregorian concerning air exchanges in hospitals. The air exchange in hospitals is something in the range of 10 to 12 at least, air exchanges per, 10 to 12 times per hour. The standard of three in the post-COVID recommendations, or I think there might be also the legislation, I'll have to do, you know, a little more research, but it has been determined that three air exchanges, three times per hour, is a minimal standard to keep congregate housing residents safe and healthy in a building such as this that's being proposed. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone that's listening to this Zoom meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Marlene.
So that there's no confusion on the matter. We're not asking for it to be like a hospital. We're asking for it to be safe for ordinary residents in a congregate housing building. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlene. We heard you and appreciate it.
Good. Well, no, everyone else was whispering during this meeting. We couldn't even hear half of the things that were said.
We're going to work on that, absolutely.
So I think it's good that I was able to speak up so that everyone clearly hears me. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
That's a respectful thing to do.
Great, thank you. So with that, I don't see anyone else's hand raised right now.
I move that we close the hearing with the exclusive.
Continue the hearing.
For the exclusive purpose to, you're from the fire department?
And the engineering department.
Engineering department.
And what about the conservation commission?
We can hear from the conservation commission, but their permit is independent law.
Got it, okay. Okay. Is there a second? Okay, so the motion is made by Adam, seconded by Justin. Any questions? Already any questions?
No, I've been listening the whole time and I, we're, we're continuing it, so, so that, that'll be fine. I have no questions. Thank you.
So, October 29th at 7:00. Do we need to vote?
We need a roll call.
Yes, we need a roll call.
Yeah.
Okay, so for the vote, Artie Crocker?
Yes.
Take that as an aye, all right.
Thank you for saying it. Okay, Paul?
Yes.
Adam Block?
Just a, just a comment before I vote. I have an event for my son that night on the 22nd and I don't think that it's, sorry, the 29th. And I, and it's for his class, so I don't think that I can actually get out of that.
Well, you can listen to the tape. And so, well.
Great. We're not voting on that night.
No, but it's the decisions that follow.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, so is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Justin, yes and yes for the chair. So there will be a continuation. Thank you all.
It's just exclusively to deal with those items. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is the decision.
For the public hearing at 8:00.
Well, is, is this decision, do you think, are there a lot of comments for this decision? Could we do it really quickly or should we go into the next public? Okay, so let's go to, so then let's go to the next public hearing and we'll do the decision right after. Does that work?
That's fine.
Okay. So the next public hearing, and thank you all from the community for coming and for stating your thoughts. It's really helpful to us. So this is a continuation also. This is for the property located at 40 Highland Avenue and 14 to 16 Riverside Street in Needham. Hi, George. Hi, how are you? So please state your name.
George Junta Jr., representing the applicant is the real person in interest. Is next to me here is Sir Steven Wilberg. And, all right, so this is a continuation from two prior hearings. At the last hearing, the board was just about to close the hearing and it was noticed that there was a condition or a comment from engineering that had not been, had not been really addressed or satisfied. So since the last hearing, the engineering team, our engineering team, went and revised the plans to address that comment. Revised plans were submitted to engineering. I understand they've reviewed them and signed off on them. And most notably, basically that was engineering wanted to see some landscaping and some additional treatment with respect to the infiltration trench that was running along one of the borders of the property. So we've added landscaping and added area drains to address their comment on that. In addition, they also made a comment and one of the board members made a comment about adding the 200-foot riverfront line. So we added that to that same plan sheet to make it clear where the 200-foot riverline, riverfront line is relative to the road and the proposed houses and so on. So that, basically that was the only outstanding item that's been addressed. Engineering signed off on it. So I think we pretty much have provided everything and at this point, we rest.
So any questions from the board?
Yeah, we are, are you satisfied that we have everything that we need to close the hearing?
Yes, we just asked for those changes on the plan and engineering has commented.
Right. Uh, I have no further comment or questions.
I'm satisfied with the response from engineering.
So I'm, I'm fine.
Artie, are you okay with the comments from engineering?
Uh, that's fine. Yes.
Okay. We have to have a. I'm sorry?
Right. I just didn't see anyone here online, but you're absolutely right.
So do we open up our public comment if no one has comments? So do I need to read that again or? Is anyone here or is anyone online for the public hearing and? We'll give it 10 seconds. Maybe they can't hear me and I need. No? Okay. I know you're not here for this one, right? No. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that, okay. So with that, it doesn't look like we have any comments. So you had a motion.
I have a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
There was a second by.
Or Justin? Okay, so Adam has a motion and Justin second. Any questions? Okay, so let's take a roll call. So all in favor say aye. Artie?
Aye, but I would ask people, I would ask the people to speak up into the microphones. He's, I guess I'm the, I, I am experienced and probably with some other people online and so forth that are hearing. So I would just speak into the microphones a little bit more so, but aye.
So Artie, can you hear me?
I, I can, I can hear you. I can hear you fine. Some, some other cases I cannot hear some people because the microphone is far away, but thank you.
Just, yeah, just alert us. We're going to try to, to be better. Okay. So Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair say aye. So thank you. So the hearing is closed. And so the decision will be when?
I would say probably the first meeting in, in November, George. Is our goal. Doing the housing committee that night.
Not like you have anything big between now and then.
And we have town, and we have town meeting on the 21st. So it's pretty busy.
Well, thank you for addressing the comments.
Good. Good to see you.
Okay, great. Okay. So now we'll go to the decision. And so that is the decision for the property at the center of the heights for the installation of the permanent emergency generator. And so I think Paul has a.
I have a bunch of comments.
A bunch of comments. Okay. So let's start.
Okay. So on the first page towards the bottom, it has the list of board members who were present and it has Jean S. McKnight and it doesn't have Justin McCurtin. So. No, Justin McCullough. So we have to take out Jean. We have to take out Jean and substitute Justin. On, um, in section 1.9 and also in section 1.11, these are in findings and conclusions. And you probably took the language from Chris Heap's letter, but you say that the petitioner respectfully requests. We're making findings and conclusions. These are words of the planning board. I don't think we need to find or make a conclusion that they're being respectful. Let's take out the word respectfully, please. In section 1.10, which is at the bottom of page three, we have although the proposed emergency generator will result in the loss of three parking spaces on the site, this parking reduction situation is expected to be temporary. I would like to change that to say that although the proposed emergency generator will result in the loss of three parking spaces on the site, the petitioner represents that this parking reduction situation at the property is expected to be temporary. I don't think it should be worded to say that the, that this board is finding that to be the case. Yeah, that's in 1.10 at the very beginning. In 1.11, based on, at the very beginning, based on the foregoing, the petitioner requests that the planning board amend, modify. You probably wanted to have one of those two words or you wanted to have amend and modify. But you know, that's a. Section 1.12. The board finds that the proposed project is in harmony with the general purposes and intents of the zoning bylaw. The site is presently developed at the center of the heights. 62 onsite spaces will be devoted solely to the CATH. With the Needham Heights MBTA to lease back 12 parking spaces. I would suggesting a wording change to say 62 onsite parking spaces will be devoted solely to the CATH comma. And it is anticipated that the MBTA will lease back 12 parking spaces, et cetera. Uh, and then after the parenthetical where it says for use in connection with the CATH add from the Needham Heights MBTA parking lot for use in connection with the CATH. Yep. Then I get to. You want me to go through that again?
I just, um, can you read how the sentence starting at 62?
Sure.
Will then be, I think I have almost all of it, but.
Yeah, let me go slowly. 62 onsite parking spaces will be devoted solely to the CATH comma. And it is anticipated that the MBTA will lease back 12 parking spaces per rent, 10 regular parking spaces and two accessible parking spaces, closed per rent from the Needham Heights MBTA parking lot for use in connection with the CATH.
Thank you. Well, I'm asking you to reiterate something.
Sure.
Could you just tell me the part, I think it was in 1.10 where you, where the petitioner anticipates that there's going to be a reduction. I just missed that.
Yep. So 1.10 at the very beginning. Although the proposed emergency generator will result in the loss of three parking spaces on site, the petitioner represents that, this parking reduction.
Perfect.
Good. Now I'm up to 1.18. Three lines down, the sentence begins additionally, the town intends for overall reduction in parking available. I would take out intends for and change intends for with expects. Expect's and. So we read additionally, the town expects an overall reduction. We don't really have intentions. We have an expectation. We don't have anything here, but what happens if we don't get the 12 parking spaces? And I think rather than making the town come back because they don't have the 12 parking spaces and asking us to amend this amendment to the special per, um, permit, I think we ought to make it clear that even if we don't get the 12 additional parking spaces, we are giving the parking waiver for the loss of three spaces. Okay. So now I get to the conditions and limitations on page six. Are you ready for me, Alex, or shall I wait a little bit?
I'm, give me two seconds.
Take your time. Unlike Adam, I have all night.
Okay, I'm ready. Thank you.
Okay. Conditions and limitations, the introductory paragraph. It says that the, the, the site plan permit issued on and then amended and three amendments, and it says were ratified. Shouldn't, shouldn't that be are, are ratified? Present tense? We're ratifying it now? 3.4. This is a substantive question. You have a condition here that says the emergency generator will not operate more than 300 hours per rolling 12 month period.
Now, Chris had asked me for broader language on that, but actually that's the language that we've included in all of our generators.
That's 12 and a half days, 24 hour days. If we have an emergency where we have lost power or there's a flood and we're using this as a temporary shelter multiple times during the year, three times during the year, something happens and we're using this as a temporary shelter. We've only allowed them to use the generator for 12 and a half days in the course of a 12 month period.
Chris Heap had suggested some broader languages, basically let you use it in the event of an emergency period without, without any limit at all.
I wouldn't limit it.
That, that, that restriction also includes their testing.
That's right.
So, so it actually further, further errors.
At minimum, you want it for the force, the length of the force majeure event on the one hand, and on the other hand, you know, even if there's a power failure, you want it to be able, even if it's not a force majeure event and there is an otherwise a power failure, you want the ability of the generator to run.
Yeah, I guess why would you limit the, I mean, no one's going to use a generator unless there's an emergency. So why would we limit the hours period?
It doesn't have to be an emergency. You can still have a non-emergency.
Right, no, no, but what I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm saying is you wouldn't use a generator just to use a generator.
Yeah, Natasha?
Yes.
Yeah, Natasha? I, I think, I mean, the only limitation should simply be on when, I mean, the basic cycling run throughout the month. When, when the thing has to, generally it has to cycle. Beyond that, there should be no limitation at all. So.
They should have their, they shouldn't be doing the maintenance at 3:00, 3:00. There should be some restriction to do.
We have that.
Their maintenance. Right, correct. But the operation during a, a power failure condition should not be limited.
Correct. I agree also.
Just because we've done it before, it doesn't make it right.
Let me just read how he originally written it.
I think we're resolved.
Actually, now that, now that Artie mentions that, in 3.4, we're saying that normal maintenance and testing shall be limited to the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
It should only be, it should only be.
It should only be weekdays.
But. Well, I think, I think this is what he originally suggested. The emergency generator shall be operated, A, for normal maintenance and testing on an interval consistent with manufacturer specifications or otherwise as needed, provided that such maintenance and testing should only, should only, I guess, occur between weekday hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM and B, in cases of power outage or emergency.
That sounds great.
Yeah, okay. Good.
We'll substitute that. Okay.
And the last.
Okay, fine. We'll just change it universally.
Leave that restriction on the hospital?
And lastly. Do you have a lastly?
You have one then?
Yeah, I know. Um, in, in two places of 3.6 and in one place in 3.9, we make reference to, um, the emergency diesel fueled generator. And.
That's what he's proposing?
Well, but we don't have anything in the findings and conditions that require that it be diesel. And they did present the proposed type of generator, which happens, I was looking at the packet, it happens to be diesel. But what if they don't buy that? What if they buy a gas powered one rather than a diesel powered one? I don't see why we need to say diesel.
We don't say it in 3.5. We just say the emergency generator.
Right. I would take out diesel fueled and it's in two places in 3.6 and one place in 3.9.
Paul, you're making Jean proud, is all I have to say. And us, it makes us look like we didn't read it.
We cheers for Paul. We cheers for Paul.
I'm telling you.
Well, some of us read it for different things.
Somebody's going to have, somebody's going to have to do this after next April.
Yes.
I know. Justin, start reading up on the legal.
Paulie, Paulie, Paulie.
Artie, do you have any, any comments?
Uh, no, I, I mean, Paul obviously gotten off a lot of things and I, and, you know, picking up on the possibility of a gas is a great thing. And so, I mean, I, I think it's.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Paul, would you like to propose the motion with all of your changes?
Well, first we have to, we have to vote. Okay, so first, I move that we grant the requested amendment to the major project site plan special permit under section 7.4 of, of our bylaw and section 4.2 of the major project special permit number 2011-04 dated October 18, 2011, amended February 21, 2012, September 3, 2013, and December 2, 2014. And I move that we grant the special permit under section 5.1.1.1.5 to waive strict adherence to the requirements of section 5.1.2 regarding required parking, subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in the decision. That's my first motion.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Paul, seconded by Justin. All in favor say aye. Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Aye, the chair. So.
Okay, and now I move that we accept the decision as drafted with the modifications that we discussed the senior.
Second.
So Paul made the motion, seconded by Adam. All in favor say aye. Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
I, the chair. So I think it's unanimous for both motions and, um, are you all set with Alex with the decision?
Yep.
Yeah. Do you want me to pass the signature sheets now?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, and with that, um, we move on to item four. Mr. Molno has been very patient here with us. So the motion to amend Article Aid of the October 2024 Special Town Meeting from Glenn Molno, from Town Meeting Member from Precinct I. So.
Wasn't there a second motion to amend that was circulated today?
Yes.
Yeah, so there were two motions to amend.
In the packet. There's a second one in the packet.
Okay. I think I have both of them. Yeah, please come up and please state your name and address and.
Glenn Molno, Precinct I, 40 Morton Street in Needham. Look at all that right. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, I guess. First time, uh, first time in, in front of you guys. Um, so I. Feels like it.
Thank you for coming. Seriously.
No, thank you for having me, actually. Um, actually, I, I wanted to say thank you for all the work you guys do. I've learned a fraction of what you guys know in the last month and, you know, it's been overwhelming to be honest with you. The amount of stuff you guys do and it's just like. All right, um, so I, I have the graphic that I shared. Thank you for, for bringing that up. It, it's, it forms the basis of the concerns. All the areas of concern are circled here. So if you look at the property rectangle, is the property in question 100 West Street. There are two current entrance exits from there, one that exits onto West Street, one that exits onto Highland across from Morton. So the first concern is the extreme closeness on West Street. You're 40 feet from a railroad crossing about 150 feet to the very busy intersection of Highland and, and West. And it's about 260 feet from that existing driveway to Hillside and West, which is acknowledged to dangerous intersection in town. Wait, I'm, and I'm going to circle back to that in a second, but, so you have three very busy intersection crossings going on right here at one of the exits. busy intersection crossings going on right here at one of the exits. And so the root of the concern is, of course, the amount of traffic that could be coming out of here, could, is of course the operative war. The, coming back to the Hillside West intersection, I understand from Heidi at one of the recent town meeting, get together, I forget what it was called, but she had a whole bunch of those meetings, that their, the town is planning to make that intersection at West and Hillside a four-way stop intersection, which that may make that safer on paper, I think. But I believe also that's going to probably create additional traffic between the Highland intersection and that intersection, because now you don't have traffic that can just go through, they have to stop and wait and take turns. Nobody likes to take turns, sorry, not to decide. But, so we have an unpredictable future situation that's going to be happening with the traffic here. So that's a concern there. So the three intersections that are very busy, dangerous, whatever you want to call them, one has got a future that is going to cause an unpredictable situation in terms of the traffic. It'd be great if it had no impact, but I doubt that because by nature, that's going to slow the traffic in that area down. The third aspect is circled down at the bottom, across from Morton, that is the other exit that comes from this property today. In the past, Morton Street had the experience when this facility was operating as a nursing home and offices and assisted living, I think, or something. It was a bunch of different things going on in there. It had the observation where Morton Street was a cut-through, fairly major cut-through for the people that live slash work there. As somebody who does a lot of gardening and spends a lot of time outside on that street, I would see people all day long, you know, blasting back and forth and they just go right across into that, into that parking lot there. So we've had about a six-year reprieve, I guess. I guess it's been closed for six years. It seems like it hasn't been that long, but. But that, of course, I think will, by nature, come back again. So those are sort of the root of the three concerns. Looking at the existing language of the articles, the by right, says, I think, forty-four units per acre is what's allowed for the by right. I don't really have a concern there. I do have a concern that the special permit nature of this does not have a cap. And I, I've tried to CC you guys on a lot of my thought process throughout this, so you probably saw I had about seventy-five different thoughts about how we could try to solve that, including lowering the FAR, you know, to various numbers, eliminating the special permit ability altogether from this property. But I think, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with folks and I think, you know, that's probably not the right way to go about it because, you know, we, I think you do want to see this building used. I think you want to encourage reasonable capacity on the building, just not unlimited. And, you know, bear with me on, I know we're not going to have three thousand units in there, but, you know, you don't want an uncapped thing. And so where I landed last week after having some conversation with some folks was rather than try to lower the FAR, instead to go directly at the concern of the number of units that could end up here and propose a cap of, the proposal was actually fifty, we left it blank for this discussion. The reason for the proposal of fifty, you know, there were, a lot of the neighbors were concerned at, in a lot of the documentation at the special permit level, it mentioned two hundred and forty-three number of units and a lot of the neighbors were very concerned about that. And I know, you know, it's just a number.
No, that, that was something that we, I, I think we took care of because what was presented to us was a hundred and eighty-seven or a hundred and eighty-nine units originally, and when the two forty-three showed up, which was kind of like the maximum that could appear, I was taken aback because it was like, hey, wait, wait, wait a minute, it was represented to us that they were planning a project with a hundred and eighty-seven units. We weren't approving two hundred and forty-three units. We weren't even talking about two hundred and forty-three units.
As of right.
Right, as of right, though. The two forty-three was mentioned as the special permit, though.
Well, let me get clear in my mind then. At forty-four units per acre and one point three FAR, are we at a hundred and eighty-seven units?
One eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine? We're at one eighty-nine?
Because the acre is like, I think it's, I think it's, you just give it to be four point two nine eight acres, right?
Okay, all right. So what they have as of right gets us to the one eighty-nine?
Correct.
With the higher FAR because they, they didn't have enough space for quarters.
Well, no, that's where they got to one point three. That's why we increased it to one point three.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It started at one point oh.
Right, okay.
Correct.
So.
But it capped the units for as of right.
Okay, yeah, so now we're saying your concern is,
For the special permit.
And now I'm hearing this and I have the same concern, is that they can come back to us for a special permit to increase that number from a hundred and eighty-nine units to something higher.
Correct.
Right.
I'm with you. I don't want to see it happen.
So, so I have two things here. Are they in addition to each other or is it?
Is one lowering the FAR?
One is, one is lowering the FAR from one point seven to one point four. The other one is a maximum forty-four dwelling units. Okay.
No.
Okay.
So if we go to fifty units by special permit, what does that allow them?
I believe that takes it up to somewhere around two thirteen, give or take one, one or two?
When you take fifty multiplied by four, it's two hundred.
Two fourteen, no.
It's up to two fourteen? Brings it up to two fourteen?
So it's two fourteen, if you don't have.
I understand, I understand.
No, no, just a quick, so FAR of one point seven, but the, but two hundred and fourteen dwelling units.
Yeah, fifty per acre, so whatever the math worked out.
He's not doing it on a total, on a total unit basis, he's doing it on a unit per acre basis.
Because that's how we have to word it.
That's how the wording was in there, so we're working with the same wording.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yep.
So. I have a few thoughts.
Sure.
And you're, you live on Morton Street, you've seen how the road had been used before. I understand where the concern's coming from. And yes, it's true that there are a number of unknowns. For one of those unknowns is it's possible that when this thing is redeveloped, we would anticipate that the thing is going to be demolished, first of all. And second of all, what's that? Exactly. Second of all, it could come back as one building or it could come back as two buildings or it could come back in other forms as well. And the curb cut and the driveway access just off of Morton, opposite Morton, not directly, because I know there's a little bit of a space there, that may go away completely, or it could be moved fifty feet, seventy feet, sixty feet, who knows? So, oh, so we just, so I wouldn't make a change just for that. Although I don't minimize the impact that you've had. And I don't minimize that and I'm still, and I still am open because to holding to our existing zoning, because of the site plan review process, it gives us an opportunity to question the number of units and to understand the impact. The challenge that I have with restricting it in this scenario where we have done it in other geography is that here we're, we're incentivizing, for instance, workforce housing and beyond the workforce housing, we're, we're, we're making a strong inducement to other forms of affordable housing. And the delta between two ninety and a hu, and a hundred and, and two fourteen, that additional twenty-five units could potentially restrict the, the, the financial ability of the, of the project. And we could easily go through a scenario where if they can't get another six units or they can't get another two units or they can't get another eight units, that it, it renders the building a blight for another fifteen years. So I think my mindset is to recognize the concern that you have and figure out, are there alternative ways to accommodate the underlying concern? I believe that through the very intentional site plan process review that we've done even very recently into, into the revision of our zoning before town meeting was to be able to accommodate a discussion and an understanding and to, you know, and to understand what they will be required to mitigate for, you know, for onsite circulation, including vehicular and pedestrian traffic and also in the affected intersections right at the, right at the property, in addition to whatever mitigation the town itself is already on its own going to pursue. And I think between the mitigation that the town intends to do and without prejudging what project is going to come to us, but knowing we have the authority to review it and to understand it and to have a conversation with a developer, I think there is enough opportunity here to be able to accommodate it without arbitrarily and adversely affecting the, a project.
I would dispute that it's arbitrary.
All of it's arbitrary. Forty-four units is arbitrary.
Well.
It's picked.
I, I would dispute that it's any more arbitrary than what, what we started with.
Forty-four units isn't arbitrary. We've got forty-four units to accommodate a hundred and eighty-nine units. That's where that number came from.
So the origin for that, you know, a hundred and eighty-nine is an arbitrary number, too.
Except that the hundred and eighty-nine was based upon the state law and the way Lee explained that it's like the floor area or something divided by, something divided by a thousand.
Right.
And that's.
Based on per unit.
A hundred, right.
Right, but so.
Yeah, so.
I understand that underlying, but go ahead.
But, yeah, so my question is, because right now, we have it at one point seven FAR. And at one point seven FAR, is that where we get to two hundred and forty-three units?
No.
No, that was on the one, that was for the one point three.
How many units?
That was for the one point three. If you, if you used the one point three on there and you used the state's formula, which was their thousands, a thousand square feet, that's how you got to two hundred and forty-three units.
Okay, so right now, by special permit, the current draft of the bylaw, we have by special permit, one point seven FAR and no limit on the number of units per acre.
That's correct.
How many units?
So how many units does one point seven FAR give us?
Three, something, right?
Yeah.
Well, according to the state's formula, well, the thousands, right?
Which would mean that each one would be a thousand square feet, which is not necessarily right. It could be that you have two and three bedrooms that are much larger.
But still.
And it also doesn't factor into any of the common area. You know, for elevators.
Well, that's why we went up to the one point three FAR was because they needed that in order to put in the common area and the.
Elevator, elevator laundry, stairwells, and a hallway.
My, my math several weeks ago was that one point seven would be roughly two hundred and forty-seven units. If you go, if you just go linear, it may not be linear and up in actuality, but if you just go linear from one point, one point three to one point seven, that brings the one eighty-nine to two forty-seven, is what it does, if you're just going by what the math says. And, and I, I mean, I was, I mean, I was in favor of putting some type of cap on there because I think people would be a hell of a lot more comfortable with some type of cap on there. That's where my concern is.
Excuse me, ma'am chair, as I remember in Powers Hall, where we had our spirited debate. I think we, we, we ended as, as a committee that the check was the special permit process.
Right.
So as opposed to actually a, a number, you know what I mean? Because we had that site plan review. We, that's what we were comfortable on that and we, I think we all kind of, we all agree, I believe it was unanimous. But, so, so that, that was the check, because we have the check on, you know, on the, as the by right, because we have that as, as a maximum. But the special permit, we want to be able to sit and, and see what concept someone is going to bring to us and really try to bring in workforce housing, affordability, you know, using some of those extra parameters that perhaps can entice a developer to do that. I think that's really important. So the, the, the special permitting process, you know, is that check and I thought that's what, that we kind of coalesced on. Two of the four intersections are already in the queue, they're already done, like, they're in the queue going to be done before any building is demolished from, from your, when you had, when you had those, um, those intersections. And you're completely right, because in, in the no-build scenario, if you looked at the traffic analysis, there's, there's a level of service decreases all throughout town. That's in a no-build scenario. And there wasn't that much difference in a, between the boat, boat scenario. So you're completely right, that, that intersection, the tip funding, that if we do not go for a compliance, we don't, if we don't go for compliance, we're going to lose tip funding. So if we lose tip funding, we're going to lose doing that intersection again, so. But nonetheless, you know, it's, you're completely right, in the four-way stop sign, the board of select would already approve that. The TSC already kind of did that. You're right, that's going to be monitored. There's seven-car queue that has to be monitored, that space between the, the gray crossing. And so, so, I mean, two of those are, are already kind of going to be handled before any situation, but you're completely right that they're.
They're handled, but there's unknowns.
Oh, sure, but any, but anything, it's just, it's like, remember, do you remember Sidney Williams, when it went up? It was going to be traffic, trafficopolis. And it's, it's not. And so, but, but everyone thought it was. It was this perceived thing. And I think a lot of people talk about perception. You know, everyone talks about there's going to be, there's going to be a problem, there's going to be a problem. We don't know. And so there, there are opportunities for optimization of signals, there are opportunities for, you know, doing further analysis. That's, that's, that's from the traffic perspective, but I just wanted to make a comment that we did, we did talk about the special permitting process as the check.
So I have a question. If somebody comes in with two hundred and eighty units, I'm just throwing it out there, because one point seven yields more, because the one, two forty-seven was based on the capping it at one eighty-nine, right? So let's just say somebody says we want, just throwing out a number, two hundred and eighty units by special permit. Can we, as a board, once they do all their analysis, come back and say, no, we don't want to, you know, where we feel comfortable is a two fourteen, I'm just going to throw a number. Can, is that reasonable to do for a special permit?
We can't, the statute says effectively, and we can't arbitrarily, capriciously reject it.
No, so if, if there were, if there are, if there, if you, the traffic analysis and everything shows that it functions at that higher level, then you, then you really have no grounds to deny your special permit. I mean, if you want to cap it, if you want to limit, you have, you have to cap it. If, if you don't have a limit and they come in and they show you, you know, building at one point seven, which is by special permit, but yet the, the impacts are not negative, you can't say no.
And if the impacts are demonstrated to be able to be mitigated to a reasonable standard, we can't.
Right, so.
And that, by the way, just for the record, Glenn, that would include taking testimony, as you've heard us do on a multitude of projects over the course. I've been here for more than five years, Paul, almost fifteen years. Almost ten years, that's it?
Ten, it feels like fifteen.
If you go by the gray hair that I've got in the past ten years.
He's only twenty-four.
It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect relief, but having the special permit authority gives us the ability to say, look, the impact at three hundred and twelve units is too great and we would require it to go to two eighty-seven. We have that authority to do that.
I believe leaving the FAR at one point seven to give the developer flexibility in not, and also the, the partial fourth floor, but also a lot of flexibility in the size of the units makes that attractive for them to go to a special permit process, even with a cap on the number of units. So my approach, talking with all the neighbors, is to either do the FAR limitation or to do the cap on the units, but I think if I lower the, if I lower, woo, I get to do everything. If the motion went in to lower the FAR and it passed, I think lowering the FAR would make it less attractive to the developer than leaving the FAR at one point seven, leaving the fourth floor option.
I think that's true. I think.
So I think it is more reasonable for that area, not just for the neighbors in the neighborhood of Morton Street, but for that, that area, it is more reasonable to put a little bit of a limit on the number of units and say, you know what, there's a lot of. and say, you know what, there's a lot of unknowns happening in those three intersections, things that are coming in the future that we don't even know what's going to cause. I do not believe it is appropriate to leave an uncapped situation there. And I think we can put the cap that I propose, leaving the FAR, leaving the fourth floor, and the developer would find that attractive. So, you know, the map's not up there anymore, but there really isn't a lot you can do for the exits on that property because the two exits now are on the ends, the extremes. To move them anywhere is to pull them closer to that, to that intersection of, of West and Highland. And that makes it less appealing. It makes it more dangerous to bring more traffic out closer to that intersection. So I have a hard time thinking that the developer's going to come with plans that moves their exits closer to that intersection of West.
Please let the need of channel know that this massive noise coming through right now, echoing really massive noise coming through right now, sorry. No, not better at all. No, that's massive problem with sound right now. Can't hear anything from there.
Is that better?
No, not better at all. No, so if I could hear it though, it could hear. It's crackling all over the place now, wouldn't it suck?
We can even channel it there, studio being on the site. I work more through it. So, um, I also saw that there's more facilities for developer assessable over the first one. Um, and we'll have, have discuss assess it.
First, your session.
There you go. You can sign this. And I appreciate your help to us. Try to use this to be signed off as a site. Um, with the fifty. Can't get it. It's mine because I want to give you some other options I should consider. For me, leaving it at that, that's not an option to just develop that. I can say, you know, working for, uh, for the housing developer, um, and you can, for private sector where it's, it's not just a whole process for housing. And I'm sure you can speak to this too if you're next to a residential client. It's the delta between talking on a special permit basis versus a, uh, by my basis. I don't think the, I think for says delta is not really attract the kind of special information. And personally, I think it just won't be a crack in the middle and we'd be relegating ourselves. That's how I feel.
For the F A R, for the F A R, either from one point three to one point four.
No, but also for the per unit, I'm not happening for units.
Not the FAR, yeah.
No, I agree with the procedure of if, if we're going to change it, not reducing the F A R, but capping the number of units. I think that makes more sense. It will make more sense to town meeting members. They'd be able to understand that better. And, you know, the, the original proposal of reducing the F A R from one point seven to one point four, I mean, that was nothing. That's changing it from one point three to one point four. You're only adding a point one, you know.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, uh, yeah. If we're going to reduce what can be done by, by special permit, I agree that the procedure is by capping the number of units per acre than by changing the F A R. But Adam doesn't want to do, doesn't want to do that, which is fine. We're going to discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question for me, actually.
Can I ask you, actually, I have something. So really, the one point three yielded the two forty-three, not one eighty-nine. But we capped it at one eighty-nine.
Correct.
So the one point seven, I, I, it would be good to know what the one point seven is. It's three hundred and something.
Yeah, I forget.
Not two forty-three.
No, if, if one point seven, it clears you a building of three hundred and eighteen thousand square feet, so it's three hundred and eighteen units.
Three hundred and eighteen.
So according to state's formula.
Yeah, but not entirely, but not according to.
No, but we're dealing with, with what the state is telling us.
No, not by special permit, we're not. I mean, by, if people will apply their formula, that's how they do it. They take the square footage that it generates by, on, on F I R, R basis, and they divide it by a thousand to come up with their unit count. That's just how their model works.
Right, but we, we, we have fifty-four, we, we reduced it by fifty-four units for the one point three, for the, for the, for the as of right.
On the base, on the basis, though, it would, you know, as we had consensus, by a special permit, we would not limit it.
I understand. I'm just saying, it, it's not, I mean, three, so two fourteen, I'm just saying, if two forty-three is one point three F A R, right, and we got it down to one eighty-nine, one point seven F A R yields three eighteen. To go to two fourteen, that's a hundred units less. I'm just, I'm just saying, it, it's a significant jump.
Or it's twenty-seven units more than by right.
Right, but you're, the F A R is one point three and, but, but one, one eighty-nine was what we capped it at. It wasn't what, what the state model said. I mean, I'm just trying to think about, because.
Apples to apples.
Yeah, apples to apples. So the, the, the difference between the one eighty-nine and two fourteen for a difference of F A R one point three to one point seven, when we didn't even meet the F A R per the thousand square feet, seems like a big, like, like a tiny fraction of increase if I were a developer. I'm just trying to think as, like a developer is like, okay, so I can do one point seven, but you're capping me. You know, you're not getting many more units. Do you know what I'm saying?
Are we having this discussion now? Are we having this discussion later? Because if we're having this discussion now, I'll weigh in now.
Okay, weigh in now.
Okay. We're talking about a huge apartment building. A hundred and eighty-seven units, a hundred and eighty-nine units is already a huge apartment building, right on the corner of Highland Avenue and West Street, which right now is one and two-story buildings, commercial buildings, one and two stories. Okay, and we're going to be.
Some three.
What?
Some three.
Maybe, okay, but still, you know, part of what we're hearing from the population is you're going to change the nature of the town. Well, unfortunately, yes, we're going to change the nature of the town. That's what's happening. That's what the state is forcing us to do. It's what the state is forcing every community that has M B T A to do, is to change the nature of their towns. Dover should be thankful that they don't have an M B T A station. Because Dover, you know, so. We're already allowing, as of right, a very large apartment building at this intersection. I am reluctant. I'm with, I'm, I'm sorry, with, with Glenn.
With Glenn.
I'm with Glenn. I don't even want to, I, you know, I'm not even sure where my head was on the special permit issue because you start adding, you start increasing this to three eighteen, so.
Artie, we see your hand.
So three eighteen minus a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-nine is an additional hundred and twenty-nine units divided by a hundred and eighty-nine. That's a seventy percent increase in the number of units in this building that we're going to allow by special permit with, um, restrictions on what we can say no to. Oh. How do I say this diplomatically? We have a history with this property owner. You come in and say to this property owner, yes, you, you came to us and said you want a hundred and eighty-nine units and asked us for zoning changes so that you can get your hundred and eighty-nine units. That's great. We've given it to you. But now if you come to us and ask for a special permit, you can get up to three hundred and eighteen units. I'm not a betting man because I usually lose, but I'd be willing to bet that this developer, this property owner, is going to come to us and ask for a special permit. And if he's allowed three hundred and eighteen units, he may not come to us with three hundred and eighteen units, but I wouldn't be sho, I wouldn't be surprised if he came to us with two hundred and fifty units. Okay? He's going to come to us and ask us for more than a hundred and eighty-nine units. That's my, you know, and everybody's nodding. Now, we, you know, we have neighbors already who are upset about the fact that we're saying he can have a hundred and eighty-nine units. And we're, and my attitude is unfortunately, that's what the M B T A law allows him to have. And so, you know, our hands are tied. But, you know, to, to now have a special permit process that says two hundred and fifty units, and Adam's right. He's going to come to us and he's going to prove, he's going to have his traffic reports, he's going to have his stormwater reports, he's going to show that it's not detrimental to the town. And Adam's going to sit there and say, we can't deny it. And, and Adam will be right, you, you know, with, and, and.
Well, you know what? You've, for months, have been cutting me down by making presumptions about what I'm going to say.
But you're saying it tonight, Adam. That's what you're saying. You're saying, you're saying, you're saying that if the economics are there.
Characterization of what I've said. If you're interested in what I said, I said that, that we can review their proposal.
That's right.
And we, uh, we can't be, we can't arbitrarily and capriciously reject it. But we can also require mitigation. I did say that.
But I, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, I'm talking about something.
Quilly-nilly.
But that, no, but that's where you're coming from. That's where you're coming from. And where I'm coming from is the political reality of the situation that we're already, because of the statute, going to be changing the nature of this town just by having a building there which looks like it's going to be built, and I'm in favor of it. I want to make that clear. At a hundred and eighty-nine units, I'm in favor of developing this property. I think that's going to be a great development for this property at a hundred and eighty-nine units. But we're going to have a situation where you're going to have standing room only. We're going to have to move to Powers Hall because the citizenry, when he comes here, when this property owner comes here with a special permit request for two hundred and fifty or more units, you're going to have the citizenry up in arms, and there'll be very little that we can do to stop it. Your analysis, you, you're right. I'm not dis, I'm not disputing your analysis. I'm just seeing, we got to think about whether we should have this cap now to prevent that from happening. I'm in favor of having a cap. I don't know if fifty units is the right number. I don't know if two fourteen is the right number, but, but three hundred and eighteen? If he can get three hundred and eighteen here and he shows up with the traffic reports and he shows up with the stormwater reports and he shows up with everything that he has and, and you say, okay, you have to mitigate, and he says, fine, I'll spend the money to mitigate.
I'd like to talk now, please.
I'd like for Artie to please say.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, good pleasure. Uh, yeah, so we have to take into account, okay? I mean, special permit, it means something, but it only means so much. It gives us some leeway, but, you know, e- even Adam, as you're saying, I mean, you know, it, it only gives us so much leeway if, if they're coming back and they're saying, here is the analysis and it will work and, okay, we'll do some mitigation. What we have to take into account also is that the planning board makeup changes. You know, we come and go. And we don't know, you know, we don't know what's going to happen down the line. Now, you know what, we know what we have, we know what the makeup is now. And I think it's fair to base, base, make our decision partially based on that fact. I do value what the community has to say or that lives around this building. Um, I was in favor of putting a cap on before. I'm more in favor of it now, putting a cap on it. Um, do I think the cap should be two fifteen? No, not necessarily. Glenn, I mean, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I think, but I think it should be a little higher than that. You know, somewhere in the two thirty, the two forty range, somewhere in there is probably perfectly fair. Um, when I say, it depends on your definition of fair, of course, Glenn, I can appreciate that. But I think we have to ba, base our decision on who we are now as a makeup at the board and the community around here. And I, I can, I can appreciate the possibility that it takes away. Okay, so we have to, we have to weigh this against what we have now protecting, and protecting against worst case scenario. And, but at the same time, yes, it is a possibility that maybe it will put some restrictions on there, which maybe, maybe it could be, maybe they do something fabulous, maybe, with more than two hundred and thirty-six units, two hundred and forty units. Maybe if they had two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-five, they'd come back and they'd have more work, more workforce housing or something like that. Maybe there was something different, maybe. But if we don't put a cap on this thing, I have great concern of what's going to happen at town meeting, for one thing, because this is in the base plan also, this. And I have great, but I have great concern if, if I was a neighbor around there as far as what's going to happen down the line. Who's going to be on the board? Who's going to approve it? Do we, you know, do we care? Do they not care? I know we always say we care about what they say, and I believe that. We care about what the community says. But I think we have to, I think we have to put some safeguards on there. And, 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 you know, when we were discussing this last time at, at Town Hall, you know, we talked about the special permit gives us some safeguards, and it does. But I don't think it necessarily gives, I don't think it gives us enough safeguards. I don't think so in this case. I think we need a cap. So I went through thirties to two forty range personally. That's where I'm at right now, myself.
Thanks, Artie. I, I was going through and the one point three, for a hundred and eighty-nine units, the one point three, um, F A R had the grossing factor that they would allow. If you extrapolate it and do the one point seven, it comes to two hundred and forty-seven units. Like if you were going to use the same formula saying that you need, which is what kind of what Artie's saying, the two forty, um, versus the three eighteen, right? So I have a question, and I, not necessarily, in the base plan, could, could we cap it but not in the neighborhood plan? No, they're both the same right now.
Yeah, they're both the same right now. Yeah, you can do it. You can decide how you want to do it.
Article ten just encompasses what's in eight. So the only, I only had to make a motion to change eight because article ten pulls this in.
Yes, but that was because, that's because his goal was to change it across the board. You're talking about a different strategy. You're saying.
If we're saying, we, we do, you know, if you, if you do the, if you extrapolate it and do two forty-seven as a cap in the base plan, in the base compliance plan.
Well, then he had, then he'd have to have another motion to kind of undo it in the neighborhood plan, which we don't have now. Because he, he's.
Who's he?
Mr. Glenn would have to have a second motion. Because right now what's happening is it's going into the base and then the neighborhood plan does not modify that provision. So now if you, if you wanted to take it out, if you put it in, if you put it in the base, right, and you didn't want to have it in the neighborhood plan, you have to take it out in the neighborhood.
Right, I understand, but, but it's an option of doing it in the base plan. I'm just trying to find, I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying in Artie, but, you know, we, we don't have, the three eighteen is, is not really real if the grossing factor didn't work for the one eighty-nine.
Keep in mind, these numbers are based on one thousand square foot units, right?
And.
There's nothing that says they can't come in with, you know, half the units at seven fifty.
Well.
No, we have a minimum. Isn't there a minimum?
No, no, no.
No, but, but tip, the market, market forces now are typically around sixty-nine or four-two bed, two bath. Not a thousand. It's not like it's going to be.
I don't think most of these are going to be two bed, two baths, though.
I think, I think it'll be, I think.
There's going to be a parking problem if we, if we got a whole bunch of two bed, two baths.
I don't think that, well.
Because there's only one, one parking space per unit is the, is the point.
That's intentional.
Minimum, minimum.
Yeah. But Glenn, but even if that is the case, that's because the whole principle of this is to promote public transit. So there would naturally be people knowing.
Probably be a bunch of studios slash one bedrooms.
So I, I think that there will be, I think there will be a broad mix. I have no idea. I haven't looked at plans. I haven't seen plans. None of us have because they don't, we don't know. Exactly. Thank you. And, but there'll probably be a mix. But I, I'm curiously, what other districts do we have where we have not limited on the number of units on a per acre basis? Because I don't think this is the only one.
Right?
Yeah, do I have, let me just grab something that will be easier for me to give to you.
That's where we got twelve units, right? Russ, two thousand and nineteen.
No, 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 that's.
Which we have no units, yeah.
So. Real quick.
Yeah.
Keep in mind two things. From the neighbor's perspective, they were pretty freaked out at two forty-three, all right?
I was freaked out at two forty-three.
So, and I'm freaked out at two forty-three. So I, I hear the language. So I, I hear the language going on here and that's not where I wanna submit a motion to amend. That at fifty-four, whatever it ends up being at, you know, to make to two forty-three. You know, I, I'm happy to discuss if we're doing fifty or fifty-one to, you know, go between two fourteen or two eighteen or. But I'm not submitting a motion to amend that ends with a cap at two forty-three because that just takes us right back to where the neighborhood was freaked out.
What about, what about two forty?
Just wait a second, Artie. Wait a second. So, and irrespective of, or regardless, or whatever the word is, I don't think that area with those intersections, I think we really need to be careful about how many units go in there. And as was mentioned, the one eighty-nine is already a large building with a lot of units, a lot of traffic in a tight intersection.
But Glenn, the whole, the whole thing, you're raising the traffic issue. And the traffic issue is something.
Only because of where it's at.
Right, but the traffic issue is, is exactly what the special permit process is all about. And you can, you might, you might get dueling traffic experts. I don't know. But if they come in at three hundred and eighteen units, okay, a special permit process, they have to show us that those intersections can handle it. Okay, that's where the traffic studies, that's where the traffic studies come, right. And right now, they probably could. You're right. So, you know, that's an issue. But, you know.
And we made sure that we revised the site plan review to reflect having, um, traffic done by, by an engineer that has a stamp. So it's not like you can have someone there counting cars, right? It's, which has happened.
Oh, and we also, we also have the situation where we have the ability to do peer review. With, with the planning board hires an independent traffic person who works for the planning board. Cause the developer comes in with somebody who works for the developer. And they come in with the traffic study that shows that they can do what they want to do.
Which we just did.
Which, which is what we had at sixteen eighty-eight, Central Avenue, and we had peer review, which is at the cost of the developer. Pays for our expert who comes in and, you know, at sixteen eighty-eight, they actually agreed with the developer. You know, but, you know, that's.
To, to the question you asked me about, about the, um, so in the, in the neighborhood plan, in all of the districts, um, where you're looking at an as-of-right housing use, um, there is a maximum dwelling units per acre number assigned. And the only exception is Chestnut Street.
My question is, in the underlying zoning outside of MBTA, what districts don't cap at housing on a per-unit basis for multi-family?
All of them cap it. In the, in the underlying zoning, all the districts have an eighteen unit, or they're, they have, well, I guess.
Three-one, three-one.
In the underlying districts, not the overlays, in the underlying districts, they all have a cap.
And the overlays?
In the overlays, it gets eliminated on Chestnut Street and in the center.
Both the center?
And Chestnut Street.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So.
I think Artie had wanted to.
Artie, do you have your hand up again? No, I think.
Uh, well, I mean, you know, what I was gonna say was that, you know, e- even if we cap the special, the, the special permit one, we still have to go through the exact same traffic studies. And, and I guess that the fact is, if the, if the developer is perfectly happy with doing a one hundred and eighty-nine unit, one point three FAR, if they really want to do something higher than that, you know, they can come back in after the fact and say, hey, we, we'd like you to rezone it higher. Is here, here we have this great plan that gives the town all this wonderful stuff. We can, we, they can come back and technically, they could ask for a higher, a higher amount. They could ask for a higher amount. I think we should cap it because it's still gonna require a, uh, the peer review possibility and so forth. And if they really have something fantastic, then they can come back and then we can go through a real, uh, a real process of the, the neighborhood looking at this really with, which, you know, this, this, gotta keep this in mind. This came in over the summertime when a lot of people were away. And, and I want to find a way to do the higher FAR. I wanna find a way to do the fourth floor. But else, but I, and again, but I want it to happen. I don't want it to fail. And I think it's best that we put a cap on this. And if developer, like I said, if they really have something fantastic, they can come back and we can go through the process and, and try to do something higher. But without that, I think there's too much risk there.
Okay.
So Artie was at two hundred and fifty units.
Two, two, two forty. Let's just say, two forty. Let's just say two forty for me.
Okay, two forty. So two forty minus one eighty-nine is fifty-one extra units divided by one eighty-nine. It's actually one. It's, it's a twenty-seven percent increase. You're at a thirteen percent increase. So if we did a twenty percent increase, is, is an additional thirty-eight units.
Which takes us to where?
The thirty-seven or something?
Thirty-eight.
Oh, one twenty-seven, or two twenty-seven?
Thirty-eight units at, uh. Well, it's four point, well, yeah. So thirty-eight and one ninety. Is two twenty-eight divided by four point three. Is fifty-three. Fifty-three, fifty-five. Call it fifty-five. Which is a little like a rounder number, fifty-three.
So, and Chestnut Street is how many units per acre?
Chestnut Street has.
Has no, in, has no limit.
No limit. It's the two point oh F A R. Okay. So Chestnut Street is two point oh. This is, and that's by, that's by right, right? Or by special permit?
That's by right in the neighborhood plan.
Right.
But that district had a two point zero and it had no limits before.
And nothing ever happened.
And we just, and we added a half a story to it. So the rules weren't changing that much there.
But what we have at Chestnut Street, what we have at Chestnut Street is we have a lot of small lots that are, that are owned by separate owners. Here we have an owner who's already come to us and said, I'm, I'm intrigued by what I can do with this zoning change that you're planning to put in. And I fully expect that if we pass this zoning, we're gonna have an application in front of us within the year.
Yeah, I already said they're comfortable with the buy right one eighty-seven.
Yep.
Now, I know it's one eighty-nine, but at the time, at the August fourteenth meeting, it was one eighty-seven. They were fine with the one eighty-seven at the one point three FAR.
So, and I, I hear what you're saying and I, and I, and I understand what you're saying too. But I also know that the reason for this is to create housing, right? And we need to have.
Sensible housing.
And I understand that, but this is probably one of the few lots in town that can actually afford to create housing. I mean, I'm just, and I feel that, um, there are two, two plans that we're showing. There's the base plan and then there's the neighborhood plan. The neighborhood plan, and there were people that wanted twice as much as the neighborhood plan. And we said, no, that's ridiculous. We need to be more reasonable, right? So I, I feel that if, if someone wants the base plan, three hundred and eighteen, so whatever, three hundred and eighteen units seems like, like, like a lot of units for the base plan. But I feel like if people want the neighborhood plan and the town really wants to create housing, capping it would be a mistake. Because this is a prime location for it and, and we can vet it, right? So I, I'm just throwing this out there. I would feel comfortable capping the base plan at whatever Artie said, two forty or whatever it is. But letting the neighborhood plan be the one that generates more housing, if it ever does, which it may not, as, as an option that the town and town meeting can make, right?
So you're, just for clarity, so you're saying that on the cap, the spec, cap the special permit now.
For the as-of-right. I mean, so for the base plan.
For the base plan. So we'd have on the base plan, you recommending that we have town me, we have, uh, a, a cap on the buy right and a cap on the, and a cap on the special.
For the base plan.
And then in the neighborhood plan.
To, to leave it as it is because if.
We have to amend that article.
Yes, exactly. We'll have to amend it articles anyways.
It just feels to me that if someone wants the base plan, if, you know, if someone feels that that's the best way to go, that three hundred and eighteen units for the base plan seems like a lot, right?
I mean, it's gonna.
It's gonna kill the neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, but that's, that's my first.
Well, then we shouldn't do it. We should, I'm just throwing out another idea of.
Depends on what we, how firmly we believe in our own zoning that we've come up with.
Let's keep, keep what they, keep what they believe. If we.
Plans, base and neighborhood, treat this, this property, this section identically.
Well, that's why I was saying that.
That was intentional.
Cause, I mean, this is the only.
This is the only one.
The rest of the town is not going to, you know, within ten years because of different parcels owned by different people, because of all the time. I know, but just because it can be built, doesn't mean we should shove a whole ton in there. I, 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 I respect that. However, the, like, to me, housing and workforce, housing and, and, and.
This one is ineligible for.
But, but it depends upon how it's.
Affordable housing.
But with, with.
Twelve and a half percent minimum.
Twelve and a half with affordable.
Twelve and a half and not.
But there could be some enticement to, to do something within the process.
Well, we're not talking about workforce in terms of our zoning, but the fact of the matter is that a major incentive for this MBTA zoning, especially the letters that we got, now you probably haven't seen them because Louise Miller sent, sent them to us at like six-thirty this evening. But we've got a couple of letters from, um, the Newton Chamber Commerce. That, that, it's called something else now. And from, um, and from a group of property owners that includes, um, that, that includes Beth Israel Needham, um, basically saying, we need more housing in town because we can't get workers.
Yeah.
Okay? We need housing for our workers. So we may not be calling it workforce, but that's the incentive is workforce. And, and so if we've got here, you know, a hundred and ninety units being built, we may not be calling it a workforce housing, but the fact of the matter is that all of these employers in town who are trying to, to draw in workers to come to Needham can say, there's this apartment building going up, it's gonna have a hundred and ninety units, it's gonna have two hundred and thirty units, however many units it's gonna wind up being. Come to Needham, take a look at these apartments, you're gonna love them. Okay, and it's, and it's a great place to live. You're right across the street from Starbucks. You're right across the street from Cafe Fresh. You're right across the street from Trader Joe's. It's a great location.
And an increased foot traffic will definitely, you know, lead to a diversification of the storefronts. So you won't necessarily have as many nail salons or as many banks. Um, you know, you'll have better restaurants. You'll have, that's, people who want to open stores in commercial areas that have foot traffic and so.
And to have somebody living there.
Chicken and egg, though.
And working down at Beth Israel Hospital, you know, if it's a young person, they'll walk, it's a nice walk.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not arguing, we're not, we're, we're not, we're comparing apples to oranges here. We're not arguing against doing something there. We're simply arguing about the maximum of what to do there. Because it is reality, this intersection is not a great intersection to put three hundred and eighteen units. It probably isn't a great intersection to put two hundred and seventy-five units in necessarily. Not either. I mean, we're not arguing against doing something there. So I think everyone wants to do something. Glenn, the whole neighborhood wants to do something there. It's just, there's, there's a maximum that this intersection should handle. And, um, it, that's what we're talking about here.
Okay, so, um.
There you go. Maximum.
So, um, I have a recommendation on, on that. So I, I get the underlying concern. It's unlimited. Oh, my God, we're gonna have a heavy monster. And even at a low number.
The underlying concern is two forty-three.
What's that?
The underlying concern is two forty-three.
Or anything above.
Anything above.
I get it, I get it. What we're, what we're missing is that, like, Charles River Landing, I think, has three hundred and fifty units. And that's, that's, that's a much.
You're comparing apples and oranges. We are in an intersection that has got a dangerous intersection. It's got forty feet from a railroad crossing.
I live there. I live there.
I understand you used to live there.
Yes.
You apparently have forgotten what you, what is there.
No, I haven't. I appreciate that.
It is a crazy section between Highland and West and Highland and.
Glenn, I get it, Glenn. I understand that. And I haven't forgotten it. Just like I haven't forgotten my parents who live in Nova Scotia. And I haven't forgotten my siblings that live in Toronto. And I haven't forgotten my cousins that live in New York.
Okay.
So I, so I.
This is not productive.
Yeah.
Well, what is productive, though, is recognizing that there are physical restrictions and limitations already within the zoning and within the confines of the site that prohibit the construction of that many units. What I was trying to say before, you, uh, you know, before you interrupted me was, was that that site is a much larger site and has the capacity to handle that regardless of the number of units, just by the sheer, uh, the sheer conditions of the site, the conditions of this site are very different. And there are natural limitations, both by the zoning, for instance, uh, uh, the height restriction would prohibit anywhere near that kind of construction. Now, the planning board methodically questioned this at multiple interview, at multiple stages in the process. Hone looked at this at multiple stages in its own process as well. And we recognized the, 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 the greater, broader public good that Natasha was just speaking about, that the state is trying to encourage. And ensuring that the municipality has enough controls in place that we can accommodate adverse impacts. Now, to your point, the question is, how, you know, how, how committed are we? Are we have, to, to the zoning that we went through? And we have a couple of options. One option is we, we continue to roll with how we've already recommended, voted the recommendation to town meeting. And, and Glenn will advance one and maybe someone else may advance another, others' motions. To amend the zoning byline, we can, and we can create new zoning on town meeting floor. We, we've done that, that's happened before. Uh, and, and that, that's one option. The other option is for us to revise this underlying zoning, make an, effectively amend it and, uh, and modify our recommendation to town meeting. Those, I think, are the two options we have.
And I do. Another break here.
Yeah.
A potential break, which is that we do have a parking requirement, which is one car.
Per unit.
Space. Minimum parking space is one car per unit. So at a hundred and eighty-nine units, they need a hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces. Now granted, we grant waivers all the time. And I hope this board will not grant a waiver for the hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces here, cause I don't know where they're gonna park. There's no street parking. There's no municipal parking lot, okay? Now, you increase that to three hundred and eighteen units, you now have to put three hundred and eighteen parking spaces on that property.
And that doesn't fit.
Yeah, where, you know, now, maybe they're gonna build an underground garage and go down three levels in order to get three hundred and eighteen parking spaces, but that's expensive. Which they, they could, they could legally do, but that, that's expensive. And I don't know, I don't know what's under there, you know, whether it's ledge or something, but.
So Adam, you said something. You said Hone, thought about, well, Hone, actually, when we did it with Hone, we ended up yielding zero units. So we vetted it and that's where we got the community was like, well, you, you know, if zero units are gonna be built, that's one of the prime places where things can be built. And so that's when we ended up changing it. And then we amended it to cap it at the one eighty-nine for, so I feel that, I mean, I, I think we need to, to figure out, you know, how we're moving forward. But I feel like we vetted it and, and I understand what you're saying. Um, but going to two hundred and fourteen dwelling units is, is almost, it's pretty similar to the one eighty-nine. And I feel like we need to create housing. And, and it might be that we get a hundred and, you know, less than a hundred and eighty-nine.
There's no doubt we're gonna create housing because the developer's already said the buy right one eighty-seven. That was there at the August fourteenth meeting. Now, I know it's one eighty-nine today, is viable, attractive, and they would move forward on that. So the question is whether there's something attractive for the special permit process. So it's not, there's nothing that's gonna kill the buy right. They don't like the special permit, they're just gonna put one eighty-nine in.
I understand, but I think as a board, we need to decide which way we wanna move.
If he's gonna make a, if he makes a motion, um, you're gonna have to make a recommendation on it. Now, if you guys come to an agreement, you'll support his motion. And if you don't come to agreement, you won't support his motion.
Glenn is here to talk to us to see if, if we can come up with a number, and when I say we, I'm including you, Glenn. If we can come up with a number where he, he makes the motion and. If we can come up with a number where he, he makes the motion and we would vote to support it.
Well, that would be ideal.
Well, that's why you're here. Well, well, plus the fact that Michael Fee has made it clear that if you're gonna do a zoning amendment, you know, a substantial zoning amendment, uh, you gotta talk to the, you gotta talk to the planning board first.
And I'm happy to talk to you.
And so at least you can go back to Michael Fee and said, I spoke to him.
It's not that we're disregarding anything that you're saying, we just have to do it based on the information.
If we, if I'm walking out of here and a number says that they, they have a two forty-three cap, I haven't gained anything for the neighborhood.
Well, we, it wasn't a two hundred and forty-three cap, it was a three eighteen. For one point seven.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
The neighborhood was freaking out.
Over two forty-three, I understand.
So if I come back and say, hey, it's not three eighteen, it's two forty, huh?
Yeah.
That, you know, that, that's not, that's not a, you know, a victory, if you will.
I understand, but it's three eighteen, it's not two forty-three, two forty-three was one point three F A R.
I understand.
Yeah.
Fifty-five units per acre would be roughly two hundred and thirty-six units, that's fifty-five units per acre over forty-four.
That's not far from two forty-three.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Yeah.
Well, it's far enough.
The neighbors and say, I got it down to two thirty-six.
Well, it's far enough.
Two forty-three already, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't you make the motion and then we, we vote, right, is that?
Well, I don't, I don't really need to.
Well, I mean, I think if he's telling, if, if he's telling you he's gonna do a fifty, I mean, I think he has to tell you what he's going to do, and then you'll have to vote what your recommendation on that's going to be.
I mean, I, I think, I mean.
We can either vote before town meeting, um, immediately before town meeting, or you can vote tonight on it. When he decides where he's gonna land, but I think it probably would be good to get it cleared out tonight.
I think fifty is too low, fifty is too low.
I don't know that I have much time at this point.
Whether it's fifty or fifty-five or, or, you know, forty-four.
I think Glenn's resolved, if we don't make a decision tonight.
I, I mean.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, at two, at fifty-two is two twenty-three, I'm assuming I've got the right four point two nine here.
Yeah, four point two nine eight.
Um, you know, and, and fifty-five is.
I mean, Glenn, if you feel like that the two fourteen is the max that you're gonna get.
No, I'm looking at, I mean, fifty-two, fifty-three, I, I feel like fifty-three would be probably the ceiling, looking at two twenty-seven. I mean, point, two nine eight, I have to go back and do it, maybe it's fifty, maybe it's being twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight units.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we also have to look at, where, where is the breakpoint? Where is the breakpoint of, of, of the mo, of the amendment passing, for example, for yourself, Glenn? At some point, it's, it's, it, there's a point where it's gonna pass or not pass, okay? So, you know, you gotta think of where, where might that point be, because if it doesn't pass, then you're gonna be, yeah, then the base plan is it, the, the base plan is gonna get passed, it is period. If you're gonna have one point, hundred and eighty-nine units, one point three or, or whatever, at a hundred, at one point seven five. So I think it's, I think it's best to, you know, compromise is not the right word here, I think it's, what, what seems fair and pr- pr- practical as far as some cap that we put on the, the larger, one point seven five. I think that's a more practical way of looking at it, I think more practical ways, is it fifty-three or fifty-five, I don't know, somewhere around, somewhere around there. But it has to be, you, you gotta be, it's gotta be something that, i- it's better, it's gonna be better to have something that the planning board, whether however we vote, potentially, has even have a possibility of supporting. And fifty ain't gonna, fifty's not gonna cut it for me, I know that much personally, that's not enough.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I was just, I was just saying, first of all, I, I'm not minimizing the concern that you have or that, you know, our co, our common neighbors have. And I don't think the planning board, I don't, there's no consensus on the planning board yet. I don't think that tonight, we're gonna resolve it, I'm not comfortable voting, cause I need to think it through a little more. But we just, we just became alerted to this hours before, I have a full-time job, I'm trying to make dinner for my family, so I get it. Um, but I don't think tonight we're gonna make a decision. And I understand that you wanna go back to other town meeting members and to other neighbors, and, uh, I think you've made a very strong and compelling case. And, you know, we don't know where we're gonna land up, end up, or land, and I can see you going forward with your, you know, with your motion to amend.
I have, I have a question for Natasha, if I might about numbers. We have a number, and I forget what the number is, you probably have it off the top of your head, as to how many units the base plan would generate.
Well, the base plan would generate for as of right?
Yeah.
Well, we capped it.
Right.
For this week, we capped it at the one eighty-nine.
I'm talking townwide to this part.
Seventeen eighty-four?
Oh, the seventeen eighty-four.
Okay, seventeen eighty-four.
Yeah.
So town meeting is gonna be expecting the.
What the base plan gives is one thousand eight hundred and seventy. The town's requirement is seventeen eighty-four. Seventeen eighty-four.
Okay, eighteen seventy, o- o- okay, so where we are now with the base plan is that as of right, this complex, if it's built at a hundred and eighty-seven units.
Ten percent.
Will be ten percent, okay? You raise it up to three eighteen, and we're talking about.
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen, yeah, eighteen percent of the town-wide allocation for the number of units that, you know, town meeting is voting to build. And that's a large percentage to give one developer, because then the question becomes, you know, for that, for, for, for that extra eight percent, um, you know, you're taking it away from, from spreading, spreading the.
No, you're adding it in.
I should say yes, but.
He's adding it in.
It's adding it in.
By special permit, it's adding it.
Okay, okay, so we're up from the eighteen seventy, we're up from the eighteen seventy to like, um, uh, two thousand.
But it's, it's by special permit, so it doesn't count.
It does, yeah, but I'm talking about the politics of the situation.
Yes.
I'm talking about town meeting, okay, I'm talking about the voters of this town and how they're reacting to it.
Right.
You know, I don't know if few people have looked in your mailboxes, but there was a flyer in my mailbox when I got home tonight.
Yeah.
From the people who want us to, to, to kill it, to kill it completely and be, you know, and be Milton, and let the Attorney General sue us.
For the record, I'm not here advocating that, I plan to vote for either plan at the end of the day, regardless of what happens here. I just would like One Hundred West to have a little bit more sanity around it because of those intersections that are literally right on top of it.
So, so why don't you tell us what you, what you would like, and we need to think about this.
Yep, that's fair.
So I think fifty-two got you two hundred and twenty-three units, fifty-three gets you to two twenty-seven, fifty-four gets you to two thirty-two, and fifty-five gets you to two thirty-six.
I'm hovering on fifty-two or fifty-three is where I'm at, I feel like fifty, fifty-four takes it too high, so, I mean.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think we've made some progress.
For the sanity, I think I would just say fifty-three.
Yeah, but you walked in here at fifty, and I think we've made some progress here.
Yeah, yeah, no, a- and that's fine, you know, I. Progress in the discussion, anyway.
Well, but it, this is what, this is right, we need to have this discussion, and it's important to have it in person.
Cause whatever number you come in at, this board is gonna either vote to, to, uh, to, to agree or not agree.
Right.
Psychologically wise, the fifty-four unit, so psychologically wise, fifty-four unit brings it just over two thirty, I think. And fifty-three just brings it under, under two thirty. The psychol, I mean, everything's psychological, everything's, there's math, then the psychological.
Ninety-nine cents, right.
Right, two ninety-nine, and, and, you know, everything you buy in the, in the store for clothes is, you know, nineteen ninety-nine and.
Yeah.
Right.
Although they're saying that doesn't work anymore. It still works.
It works for those of us, so what are the next steps, then?
Well, I think he needs to decide what number he's gonna land on.
I think fifty-three feels like the, a, a reasonable compromise.
You'll file it, and it's for us to.
You'll file it, and then we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
You'll have to vote your position on it, your next meeting is before town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, it's on the twenty-first. We might have met at seven o'clock on the twenty-first.
Just to support town meeting.
So you'll send, you'll.
Your meeting before town meeting?
Yeah, that'll be the meeting that we agree.
Oh, I see.
We have a meeting at seven o'clock.
And town meeting.
Probably in the Highland Room.
That's right.
Cause we have to keep.
You already have a reserve?
Changes and all that.
So you should come to that meeting, and you have your motion, and we'll vote it.
Seven o'clock, be- before town meeting in the Highland Room.
Which is where?
In the basement.
The basement, one of the town halls.
Just to make it more exciting that night.
Oh, yes.
And you'll email us.
Then we have to have the presentation.
What's that?
The presentation has to include.
No, he's, this is his motion to amend.
No, but if we made it.
We have to respond to it.
We have to respond to his motion to amend with our recommendation, so this is our article, um, and he'll make a motion then to amend our article, and then we'll have to tell, town meeting whether we agree with the motion to amend or not.
Okay. Glenn, you're making it really hard for me, but we're gonna work together. We're gonna have that motion to amend.
For the record, I.
No, no, I know.
I, I came in not really expecting you guys to vote to support the motion to amend. My goal ultimately was come up with language that you would feel was at least acceptable if it passed, so.
And I think more than that, you got a little more than you bargained for, because you've laid out, at least, and Justin and I have, and I think also, Paul has done a very good job.
Gotta speak into the microphones, guys.
Thanks, sorry, Artie, I think all of us have articulated, you know, the rationale, and that gives you a little more time to process, as it gives us a little more time to process, you know, whether or not, on the one hand, we want to instill a cap, and whether or not we wanna do it on a base plan and the neighborhood plan, or just one or the other. And if there is a cap, what the cap amount is, and what the rationale for the cap is.
I, I hear that on the doing one plan or the other, but I think the numbers, you know, forty-three, three hundred, whatever number you wanna come in between there, is too high for that property regardless of whether you do it on the base plan.
Or the neighborhood plan, sure.
No, no, I know, I just was trying to figure out if there was another option.
I admire that, compromise is, is like the fruit of life here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You haven't been following national politics, Artie.
So on that note.
On that note.
On that note, thank you, Glenn, for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, um, okay, so I think we have a.
Thank you very much.
We have a path, thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Um, okay, so.
Good discussion.
Let's get to the meeting.
Adam, good discussion.
I thought, I thought it was.
Really good discussion.
Yeah, I appreciated everyone also being civil about it, because it's, no, I mean, this is a really contentious thing.
Adam and I are gonna go out and get our boxing gloves.
That's okay, but after the meeting, okay, so now, the next thing is the A and R plan for one oh three Lawton Road and one thirty-three South Street. Do you have, Lee, do you have any issues with it?
No, the plan is fine from engineering, it's, it's a modify, we've already had this plan in front of us, they're, they're tinkering with the lot lines. Um, cause they brought in another parcel, so, um, I'll let them speak to it, but it's been reviewed here, and we're fine with the plan.
Okay, does anyone have any comments?
No, I'm just trying to figure out what they're doing with this jog on lot two, two oh six A, which is already fronting on South Street, and they've got this jog that goes up to Lawton Road. Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that for? Yeah, yeah, it's interesting, but.
Well, Paul Bolio's here. That jog's been part of the earlier plans, too.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, uh, do we need to vote?
I move, oh.
You wanna have him answer your question, or not?
No, it's okay, it, it, it really doesn't matter, I move that, um, um, we accept the A and R plan, we sign the A and R plan.
Second.
So, motion by Paul, second by Justin, any questions or comments?
Uh, question.
Yeah.
Uh, it's otherwise compliant, right?
It's compliant.
And it's seen, and, and meets the standard of what we require on the plan itself?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't see anything, but I wanted to verify, cause that's come up.
Okay, great, so let's take a vote, um, all in favor of say aye, Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Uh, Adam?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And aye of the chair, so, um, it's unanimous, um, for the A and R plan. Um, moving on to the next one is the board.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, have a good night, that was easy. It's always nice to come.
Hey, Paul, play, play ball, that's all I have to say, play ball.
Paul's gone.
Paul's gone, Artie, but I agree with you, okay, the next one is the Board of Appeals, and so there were, hold on, let me just.
Was there anything specifically for us?
There were four items.
Yeah, what, the first, I think, was a continuation, so you already took a position on it.
Mm-hmm.
That's the thirty-seven.
Actually, just on, 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 the one on Manning Road, there's just some nomenclature problem on Manning Road. Uh, they've labeled, oh, on several of the sheets, they've l- labeled Manning Street as Otis Street, and Otis Street is Manning Street.
That's three seventy-eight Manning?
Yeah, three seventy-eight Manning, they, if you look at the sheets, they're like A dash one point one, the one that says Manning Street should they, should say Otis and vice versa. And the same thing on the next one, and the same thing on the next one, and that's, that may be it, so there may be just three sheets, A dash one point, one point, two point three. Their, their street names are wrong.
Yeah, so.
We, we'll let Daphne know that by email.
Okay.
So thirty-seven Millsy was one that we already took a position.
Yes.
Um, anyone have any questions on that, or are you okay with moving forward, continuation? Okay, one, eleven thirty-two Highland Avenue is for the dance studio, a special permit to allow private school use.
I move, we have no comment.
Okay.
Lee, did you see we had a comment in any of these?
Well, let's go one by one, just to make sure.
Already on the first one, but the, but the next three you have not commented on yet.
I know, but I wasn't sure if there was anything.
Well, one third, so one third, do we need to do each individually, or can we do them all at the, so one third, eleven thirty-two, no comment, right?
Yeah.
Um, eight fifty-eight Gray Plant Avenue, the ballet.
I move no comment.
Okay, anyone have any questions on that? And then three seventy-eight Manning Street, um, there were typos, is what I heard from Artie, but beyond that, anything that you're concerned about, Lee or Alex?
No.
Okay, so should we say no comment, um, to, to those three?
Sure.
Okay, and you, you made a motion, right?
I'll move the last one, too, I move no comment on the third one.
And Justin, you seconded it?
So we're doing it in one motion, no comment.
Yeah, we're doing it in one motion, no comment, if we had different comments, then I think we would, right?
So I seconded, uh, no comment on those, those three individual, um.
Yeah.
And the other one, we'd already made a decision.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, um, so let's take a vote, all in favor say aye, Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I say aye as the chair, so it's unanimous, um, we have no position on any of them.
I did have a question, we're allowed to do that, that's a new procedure.
Well, I, I, I mean, we, I think it's fine, cause you, cause you agreed on everything, I mean.
It was, it was no position on three of them.
I made three separate motions.
I know you did, that's why, and that's why, as opposed to what.
Do you wanna do it as three separate motions?
But I just wanna know, procedurally, is the correct thing to vote each one individually?
Well, when we do decisions.
I think Adam's correct.
Findings, we combine them, um, I mean, we could both consider.
If we were making a comment on.
Yeah, I think, I think there was a, if there was a problem with it.
That's why I wanted to go through each one to see what it was, so.
I think if we're voting on no comment, I think it's fine, if we, or if it was reversed, then.
All right.
Okay, so that's the Board of Appeals, the General Bylaw Review Committee appointment, um, are we?
So this is a committee that's being created, so is that, either can be a planning board member that serves on it, or it could be a prior planning board member that, um, might be interested in serving on it, and so I was thinking, I, I haven't approached these people, but, you know, just looking, thinking about the repertoire of lawyers on the board in the past.
I nominate Ron Ruth.
Ron, or Gene, or Jeans, I don't know if either one of them would be interested in doing it, but I think Ron, either one of them would be a good, a good, good person to have.
Actually, any of, you know, Mo Handel would be good, he's a former planning board member.
Hey, I have a question, I, I have a question, Adam, were, wasn't some committee similar to this that you were, we appointed you to, or going to appoint you to?
So, um, I sat on a, a, a precursor that gave rise to this, cause there hadn't been one, so now the town is setting up, uh, you know, a general bylaw review committee. I can't, do you, do you, uh, when does it, when does it meet, I haven't seen the, the charter of when it intends to meet and the, and the frequency. Right, but I don't know if, if we're, are we starting now, and we're, and they intend to meet for the next, you know, once a month until the next town meeting, or for the next town meeting in October of next year? I don't remember the frequency and the duration of the, uh, appointment.
So Adam, I know that just while, while they're looking for it, I know that you aren't doing a large house, um, is there something that you're. I know that you aren't doing a large house, um, is there something that you're interested, isn't there a parking?
Parking bylaw?
The parking by, is there something that you're interested in more than, or is this one the one that you're interested in?
Uh, it depends, it depends on the time. I, I, I don't, I can't just willy-nilly it, I have to think through the, the frequency and the requirement.
Because if this general bylaw is more of an attorney, and Ron Ruth or someone like that would be better, and you'd be better at something that is more tectonic, let's say.
Right.
So this bylaw, I guess was passed.
Yes.
Set up the General Bylaw Review. States that the committee shall commence in January of each year, ending in a five, which makes it every ten years, and shall provide for the committee to make any recommendation to annual town meeting.
So that's twenty twenty-five.
Of the follow, wait a minute, of the following year. So they really have.
A year.
A year, I don't know how often.
More than a year, so, yeah, so you're probably gonna meet at least a half dozen times, I would think.
And it starts January.
Yes.
So is there something else that you're interested in, or is this something that you're interested in?
I, I need a little more time to think about it, I can't resolve it right now.
Okay.
Okay, if, if, for Adam, we're not interested, um, would you, would you like me to approach, um, Ron Ruth, or Mo, and Gene, to see if they're interested?
Absolutely. So, Adam, it's up to you, right? Does everyone feel comfortable with that? Artie, do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable, I mean, Adam, I guess we're just gonna ask, do you wanna, um, slide the Castle of Economic Affairs over to someone else on the board? And then you take this up, you'll have more time, or what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, I just, I need a, I can't, yeah, I can't just decide that at ten o'clock at night, man.
Okay, so you'll, you'll email.
Six minutes.
Okay. So that's what we're gonna do. Um, okay, meeting minutes, does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes? I didn't have any comments, but.
You want motions?
Sure.
Let's take these one at a time. I move that we approve the meeting minutes of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, as presented in our packet.
Second.
So, motion made by Paul, um, seconded by Justin for the August fourteenth. Um, so all in favor say aye, Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Adam Block? And Justin McCullough? Okay, so, and aye the chair, so it's unanimous, that's approved, August fourteenth.
I move that we approve the meeting, meeting minutes of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, as presented in our packet.
Second.
Okay, so, motion made by Paul, seconded by Justin, all in favor say aye, Artie Crocker?
Aye, aye.
Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Justin McCullough?
Aye.
And aye the chair, um, so it's unanimously approved. And do we have one more, September?
I move that we approve the, um, minutes of the September five, twenty twenty-four meeting, as presented in our packet.